Notice to the public meeting of the City Commission of the City of Brownsville pursuant to Chapter 551, Title V of the Texas Government Code. The Texas Open Meetings Act notices hereby given that the City Commission of the City of Brownsville, Texas, in accordance with Article V, Section 12 of the Charter of said city, will convene a regular meeting on Tuesday, August 6, 2019, at 4:00 p.m. in the Commission chambers on the second floor of Brownsville City Hall, Old Federal Building located at 1001 East Elizabeth Street, Brownsville, Cameron County, Texas. Please stand for the invocation and the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let's pray. Father God, we thank you for our many blessings, and at the same time, Lord God, we lift up the families of those who lost loved ones in El Paso and in Dayton, Ohio, on Saturday. Lord God, we ask you to heal those that are wounded, heal those families, and bring our nation together, Lord God. Bring us back to you and the foundations of this nation. Help us to no longer be afraid to pray in public, and we thank you that we do that here in Brownsville. But, Lord, give our kids something to believe in, something to live for. Lead and guide us as parents, lead and guide each of us, as every one of us have somebody following us, and help us to lead them in a way that will direct them to something better. Lord, for this meeting here tonight, we lift up our mayor, our city commissioners, and every presenter. You know what's on the agenda tonight, Lord God, and you know it better than we do, and you know the long-lasting effects, and we ask you for wisdom here tonight, in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Honored the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas one state, one God, one individual. I will read the executive sessions. Executive Session A: Attorney Consultation Pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to Receive Legal Advice and Counsel in Connection with the City's Rights, Duties, Privileges, and Obligations Related to the Collective Bargaining Labor Agreement between the City and the Duly Recognized Bargaining Agent for the City's Law Enforcement Personnel, the Brownsville Police Officers Association. Executive Session B: Attorney Consultation Pursuant to Section 551.071-2 of the Texas Government Code to Provide Legal Advice in Connection with the Donation Agreement between the City and the Union Pacific Railroad Regarding the Building Trail. Executive Session C: Attorney Consultation Pursuant to Section 551.071 of the Texas Government Code to Provide Legal Advice in Connection with the Laws of Style and Number Brownsville GMS versus the City of Brownsville, Cost Number 2019-DCL-02693, 445th Judicial District Court in Cameron County, Texas. Executive Session D: Consultation with Attorney to Receive Confidential Legal Advice Pursuant to Section 551.071-2 of the Texas Government Code on a Matter Related to the Amendment of Chapter 38 Code of Ethics in Which the Duty of the Attorney to the Governmental Body Under the Texas Disciplinary Rules of Professional Conduct of the State Bar of Texas Clearly Conflicts with this Chapter.
Can I already say it's the executive session?
I think we need a motion for that. Go into executive session.
We have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
It is now 5:43. We will reconvene from executive session, and the next agenda item would have been possible action on items as discussed in executive session. We do not have any action items, so we'll continue on to the next agenda item, which is the work session. We will begin with the City's Proposed Fiscal Year 2020 Budget.
Mayor Commissioners, good evening. This is the first foray into the 2020 budget. We're not going to go into the 2020 budget today. We did break this up, this presentation, into two parts, so we'll do one part today and one part on the 20th. This is the table of contents for what we're hoping to accomplish today. I'll provide some context in terms of how we budget, what the Brownsville budget looks like, relative to some comparison that I want to just make a point on, talk about kind of where we are, what my observations are, what we've been doing here historically, and then also, Lupa will start talking about some measures we're taking as part of the new year's budget. So just in context, what I want to show in this graph, and there's a sheet coming after this, prepared by our financial advisor, is just showing Brownsville in context as a top 25 city, while population-wise, we're up there in the top 25. Just for perspective, part of what I've discussed with some of you is, if you look at our tax base, that's that orange bar. We're 25th in terms of our taxable value, so this is just to show that, you know, we are challenged to do more with less, and our focus has become looking at growing our tax base. This is another way to look at this. This is a comparison across the 25 cities. The one particular item that I'm really focusing on here is the taxable assessed valuation. These are 2018 numbers, so this is kind of where we stand with regard to this peer group. That taxable valuation also is connected with our bond rating and our TAV ratio relative to our population, so that figure impacts other figures. And here you see the general fund revenue column, same thing, our tax base is, from a property tax perspective, drives our general fund's ability to provide revenue, also our ability to be competitive with regard to the tax rate and have high fund balances. And this is a snapshot of an analysis that Verdunity did for the city, and this speaks to the tax base because it pretty much breaks it up by our land use, actual land use, and it shows that roughly 72% of our tax base is residential, industrials 5%, commercials roughly 20%. So kind of therein lies our need to continue focusing on diversifying our tax base and building that commercial base and industrial base. So this slide is titled "Building Brownsville," so what are we doing about that? So one of the things that we've begun to focus a lot more on is managing growth, being more diligent about our development pattern, how we're building, how we're growing, streamlining our permit process. This is part of what Friesen Nichols is helping us do this evening. The Commission will appoint a couple of subcommittees that will start to work with staff and our consultant team to start to look at these areas, to really become more functional, more business-friendly, and have a better lens at, okay, how we grow actually matters, and we have an ability to influence that through our development regulations and processes. We're also taking the lens of, how do we balance our tax base so that we do more to grow the commercial and industrial side of things? And that comes through our economic development program. This includes working with BCIC, working with GBIC, and also redevelopment. Through the assessment from Verdunity, we know that investing in downtown is a good business decision. We have infrastructure there, we have services there, there's a better ROI when we reinvest in downtown, and we also have a lot of potential to capitalize on some of the vacant and underutilized parcels that are within city limits. So in March, the Commission approved a budget amendment to start to look at each of these areas and start to make headway. One other note is, in my time here, our net position has been positive. One of the items of note is the latest audit presentation shows that our net position declines because of our infrastructure that continues to age, so that really means that we need to really focus on our reinvestment of our infrastructure. Our fund balances have been healthy, they're roughly the highest we've had in the history of the city, and that's a good thing, and there's work to be done in maintaining that. Same thing with our credit rating, it's been strong, we've had multiple increases, and we also have it at the highest the city's ever had it. These are all kind of, to me, foundational elements. We have a lean service level, that's just more so a product of our revenue capacity. What it means is that we have the ability to grow smartly from here on out. We've also been pretty aggressive with how we fund our debt. We typically issue 15-year notes to save on interest, and our financial advisor will talk during the CIP portion about how that gives us some flexibility today. And then we've also been very proactive at maximizing refunding, so these are all things that we've been doing very well. We're still in a foundational year, from my perspective, in terms of the organization. We're still building our team, there's a new structure that we're currently implementing, we're focusing on professional development of our employees, we're also making sure that we encumber all of our outstanding bonds that we've issued, that we are actually utilizing those bonds on time, and we'll continue assessing different operations, maintenance plans, programs, and that type of thing, which to me impacts the budget because, in certain areas, efficiencies and things of the like, we can't really speak to until we continue to look at our operations. And then I'll ask Lupa to go over the end-of-year performance.
Our Lou Mair City Commissioners, year-end projections for the revenues. These projections are based on May 31st numbers. We won't know what the final numbers will be until the end of the year, but based on our best projections that we have, the three top revenue sources that we got is property taxes, sales taxes, and fees, they're trending positively. Total revenues at year-end, we believe we have a positive trend of $1.6 million. A year projection for expenditures, these expenditures are by classification, again, we're trending positively as far as the expenditure's not being under budget amounts, again, it's a positive trend. Next page, on 12, we have year-end projections. We estimate that we're going to have year-end projections to increase our fund balance of positive $175,000. Now, talking about future budget restructuring, we establish funds to dedicate community priorities. This is Commission's priorities to define utilization of these funds. We currently account for some of these activities under the general fund. What we're going to be doing is creating special revenue funds to account for them, is to clearly show utilization of these funds, especially like the street maintenance fund, and compartmentalization of funds to absorb market shocks. We're going to take the opportunity right now to, based on the increased appraisal values, this is to decrease the general fund dependency on the bridge transfer. The bridge transfer, historically, we had increased up to $4 million. Right now, we're going to bring it down, reduce it to the levels of fiscal year 2018, which is about $3.1 million. That extra money, we're going to be using to fund a cash system for capital outlay programs. It also helps the general fund against being exposed against market shares. When you reduce the dependency of the general fund and the bridge transfer, it reduces it in case that we have market downturns like the peso devaluation. One of the major factors would be a bridge that would be affected, and the general fund. We also taken the opportunity to create enterprise funds. This is to better show how these funds are performing financially on their own. On the CIP modeling, we are performing more modeling scenarios, planning, because our debt drop, our debt for debt will be drop-off after 2024. But we're going to be, how we're going to be doing this is we're going to be addressing this so that we could level off the debt by restructuring and refunding. We've been working with our financial advisor, Mr. Noehnhausen, he'll come over and explain a little bit more, elaborate on this. This schedule basically illustrates the number of funds that, it illustrates the funds that we're creating to better clarify the opportunities or the costs of the priorities of these funds. On your packet, on your handout, you have some definitions of these. On one of them, that I'll just go over briefly, you have the street drainage maintenance fund. This is going to be a special revenue fund to account for the drainage maintenance fees, revenues, and to cost, and to cost of, to address these community priorities. The rest of the definitions are on there, on the funds that we're going to be creating.
So I'll shift gears a bit on the streets and drainage. So Lupa talked about how we're creating a special revenue fund to show how that street maintenance fee has been used. What we did this year in terms of our CIP is, we looked at streets and drainage, and we separated maintenance from reconstruction to better define how we fund each program. Here, there aren't revenues necessarily. The point of this slide is to show, if you look at the street maintenance, the source funding has been the street maintenance fee, general fund, CDPG funds, and some COs. So when we issue some bonds, some of that funding was being commingled with street reconstruction and street maintenance. Going forward, we want to eliminate that and no longer be using any funding from debt to fund maintenance. On the next slide, you show the actual amounts. So $7 million, we do most of our maintenance in-house. So $7 million is the sweet spot, so to speak, so that we efficiently maximize labor times materials for all of our in-house street maintenance. Street maintenance fee provides for $2.8 million, general fund $6.77, and the CDPG roughly half a million dollars, so that's $4 million toward the seven. What we call, so we call it a gap of $3 million. To be most efficient and productive with the staff that we have, we want to be at roughly $7 million, and that would be keeping our streets that are in fair condition, in good condition, and not letting them fall into poor. On the right side, you see reconstruction. We, our target number is at least $4 million. What we currently have in certificates of obligation that have been issued is 2.7. In the CIP, you see that we do have some capacity to issue more and shore that number up, but this is just to give you a snapshot of where we've been. If you look at the very top, that $65 million number, the latest report by Verdunity showed that our outstanding street liability is just over $1 billion. So what they did is, they looked at, if we were to, over 20 years, catch up and fund all of our street maintenance, we'd have to be funding the program to the tune of $65 million. So overall, if you combine street maintenance and reconstruction, it's $11 million. Obviously, there's a gap there, but that's just to show kind of where we have work to do. Please stop me if there are any questions in the process. Drainage, same thing. Here, the, most of our maintenance is in-house as well. $2 million is kind of the current service level, that's based on actual work order data. We'd have to look at that again and see if that's an adequate service level. That's not what this number represents, this is just what we do in terms of the amount of times that we clean our inlets, our ditches, our culverts, and things of the like. So even based on what we currently do, we have a gap of 1.3 on drainage maintenance. In terms of improvements, there's a 2007 study that shows we have roughly $200 million of need, and that number has likely grown just through inflation and costs that have gone up. Toward that $2 million, $200 million, sorry, we have a current note for the Texas Water Development Board that we've applied for to do several improvements. A lot of this is technology and better managing the assets that we actually have, some of it is for actual capital projects.
The bridge fund, what we want to focus on here is on the transfers out for capital outlay program. This is a capital outlay that we elaborate a little bit more on the next couple of slides. We're also, we're wanting to fund a fleet replacement program, which will be part two of this presentation, and we're also going to be providing a $1 million transfer to our OPEP trust. And again, I'll go over the OPEP trust on the next few slides. The next one would be the landfill garbage collection fund. The activities of the landfill garbage funds were accounted for in the general fund. What we're doing here is we're separating it out into a enterprise fund, so we could show the relationship of the general fund dependency and the operations of landfill. You have your landfill revenues, garbage collection, and few must-have fees, your operational costs for the landfills, $5.4 million, transfer out to the debt service, and transfer out to the general fund of $9.3 million. Again, these funds were usually captured in the general fund as specialized revenues. Right now, we're separating and having it's own fund so we could show the relationship on the landfill and the dependency of the general fund on the operations, to continue operations. Next slide, we have the convention tourism. Again, this convention tourism is a special revenue fund, and we have the event center fund that was accounted for within it. We're going to separate the, we're going to separate, separate the event center out on its own as an enterprise fund, so again, just to show, could show the relationship on the general fund subsidy on that particular fund. Towards the left-hand corner, you have the contributions from the organizations that use hotel motel tax. This is just to illustrate their request for 2019, we're currently working on their request for 2020. And the next slides, I'm going to invite our financial advisor, Noehnhausen, to go over.
Good evening, Noehnhausen, with the strength of Noehnhausen Company. And first of all, I look forward to working with you, Mayor.
Thank you.
First time I come to this commission and find two, three new faces, and the other one's not so, new faces, but it's been a pleasure working with you all. I think here, the spreadsheet that we're showing you is basically amortization of the various loans that the city has currently outstanding. I think the city today has about $155 million in principal outstanding, and it's paid off this particular way. So you've got bonds being paid in 2020 all the way through 2043. The, when we're talking about restructuring, trying to level off the debt structure so it can have some capacity, if you look at the five first bars, they're, you know, they're shy of $18 million in the first three years, and then it exceeds $18 million. So what we're going to try to do this year is basically shave off that by bringing principal down on existing payments, tossing them to the back, so that we can bring capacity and allow you to do CIP improvements. I think the city manager and his staff has given us a list that you'll see in a minute that exceeds far more than what you can finance without having to impact the tax rate. The tax rate, as you know, is 70 cents. 44 and 1/2 cents is to work with your budget, and 25 and 1/2 cents is to pay the various loans you have outstanding. So in essence, by keeping the tax rate at 25 and 1/2 cents, shaving off these bars to where you have more of a seamless, I guess, amortization schedule, and bringing up some capital needs, you'll be able to do some financing. So it's been presented to us, and this is not uncommon, we saw this about two, three years ago when we had a CIP, you have significant drainage improvements that need to be done. We've been working with the Texas Water Development Board, our staff has been working with your staff, in trying to find pockets where they can lend us monies at attractive rates. I understand that HUD through CDPG is going to be providing some assistance there too to do part of the drainage improvements, but then we have the, what the city needs every so often, streets and other things that I think the staff will be bringing to you. In the end, we'll be able to achieve that by, again, doing a restructuring sometime this year, in probably the fourth quarter. And then this next column shows you how we project. The red line is basically the equivalent of a tax levy specifically for debt structure, for debt. So 25 and 1/2 cents, today, you know, levy at about 70 million, shy of $70 million. If the tax value continues to grow, you've probably heard about the rollback rate, in that you can only go up to 3 and 1/2%. Well, going forward, we have made assumptions, at least to '24, that values will grow at 3 and 1/2% along with the tax rate, and thus, what you see those blue bars or purple bars is what allows you to give you capacity. So today, for example, especially today, when interest rates dropped, I don't know if you heard, the Dow Jones just yesterday dropped 800 points. I don't know what it did today. Some of you follow the market probably better closer than I do, the equity market, but any time that the stock market goes down, interest rates go lower in an attempt to stimulate the economy. So interest rates today, to your perspective, continue to be very attractive. So despite the fact that they're attractive, you can't just go out there and borrow all the money you can. In this particular case, we think that as we go about bringing down the amortization of pressures on your debt portfolio, you'll be able to have some ability to fund capital projects. With that, Noel, you want to continue?
Yes. Just a couple more notes. What we've discussed with Noeh is, this is a proactive management, while having a 15-year amortization is great, it also creates a lot of pressure upfront, and our tax base, as we saw earlier, it's like a 30-year mortgage, a 15-year mortgage, it's a cash flow issue. It's great to have a 15-year, but in our case, it creates pressure, and then the other thing is, it creates this drop-off, where if you look at that amount, and we'll share some of our capacity here in the next slides, it creates, on 2025, the city would have to basically be issuing large quantities of debt, and then you have the issue of, can we actually put so much new infrastructure out there or deliver new streets and drainage? Can we use those bonds fast enough, in other words? So part of that is, how do we better manage that cliff that we're going to face, and it's leveling it off, creating capacity upfront, but also making sure that we don't have a situation where we just have, we can't issue that much debt and actually deliver on it.
Next slide here, we got is the capital improvement program overview. We have a total capital improvement program request of $117,000, excuse me, $117.5 million, where we're proposing CIP to fund for the first five years, about $56 million of that. It includes grant funding and COs available. The unfunded portion is $61.5 million. On your handouts, you have a better clarification of the, I know it might be hard to see it on here, but on the screen, you'll see the different projects or departments that the CIP has been allocated to. You have two columns of the existing grant funding, the amount that's existing CO funding, and the amounts that are being requested by each of their respective years, fiscal year 20, 21, and 22. Those are the ones that we're proposing, based on the restructuring, the capacity that we're proposing, that we have capacity to fund the $7 million loan from the Texas Water Development Board, and fund $10 million annually for the next three years to fund these projects. The items in red are the ones that are, we're proposing, but we don't, we haven't had allocated any funding for yet. On your packet, you'll have a detail of the information that's being requested, it's broken down by year on there, and it ties into that first schedule. I'll go, I'll go on to the capital outlay program. Capital outlay program is basically small projects that we want to fund, projects that are usually under $100,000 and/or the lifespan is not over, that we don't want to issue debt for a long period of time, 10, 50, 20 years, we want to, we want to fund it with short-term amounts. The amounts that we're looking for to fund this is from the bridge transfer of the $400,000. Again, on this schedule, you'll see of the $400,000 that we're transferring from the bridge fund, or we're planning to fund on a year-to-year $400,000, that's included on years 20 to 25, 2024. On there, again, it breaks it down by the departments or the category. On the following page gives you a better detail of the description of what's going to be funded, and that handout is, that handout is in your packet. And the next schedule that we have, this is a master list, this is a CIP master list that we have. Basically, it provides for the CIP the amounts that have been requested but are not funded for fiscal year 20, 23, and the out-years. That's on the first, on the left-hand side, and on the right-hand side, you have your capital outlay requests for funding year 2025 and the out-years, and they're broken down on there. You have any questions regarding this?
And the final slide, as I mentioned earlier, this is part one. We'll bring some more innovative ways that we're looking at addressing our need to replace our light-to-medium fleet, that'll be on the 20th. We also have the OPEP trust, we'll go into more detail. We'll talk about what we're doing similar to the CIP, how we're proactively managing for that drop-off. We're also proactively managing for the impact that Senate Bill 2 will have on the city. We'll talk about that in more detail as part of the tax rate presentation, but essentially, the state is now limiting the abilities, city's ability to raise revenue on the property tax revenue side. While we can show you what that means, what that would mean for this fiscal year, we don't know what this will mean for the next two to five years. So we're going to run some multi-year operating budget scenarios. While we do it currently for our capital program, we don't do that for our operating budget. So that'll be our homework during the off-season. As we prepare for fiscal year 2021, we want to come to you with a five-year plan that many times is very hypothetical, but at least it gives us a better way of making short-term decisions based on what's now going to be the new normal, and that's the state telling you how you can raise revenue within the property tax rate. And then we'll go into detail in terms of what we're recommending for the fiscal 2020 budget, and then also what the steps are that remain within the budget calendar.
I have a quick question. I noticed the airport, the new terminal's listed as an unfunded project. When that project was approved, that the funding sources weren't laid out in detail?
The tax note.
2024, right?
Yeah. The airport.
On the airport, what was funded was, was an amount, this amount includes Phase 3 of the project. What was, what was funded was Phase 2 of it. This is a Phase 3 that's yet to be, to be funded.
Okay, thank you.
Yes.
What is Phase 3?
That's a, call it the airside, the aprons, the runways, and within this amount, there are some added change orders that will be coming to your consideration and approval.
Fun stuff.
Yes. Well, some of it, yes. And some of the $7 million dollars will be grant-funded. That's something that we're in the process of applying for the grant, but all of it is here, does amount to be issued with the tendency to get reimbursed by the FAA.
But they're either not necessary to operate the new terminal?
It's not to operate, it's for construction.
That's the runway expansion.
That's the runway expansion and things like that, right? Yeah.
It's completing the terminal and doing the airside of it, the jet bridges and the apron where, yeah.
So we gave you all a lot, but this is again y'all's first budget, my first budget. So we're really giving you a more expansive window into what we've all done. Um, and then we can, this lays the groundwork to cover what remains in part two and then lead into the twenty, twenty budget. Anybody else have any questions?
So one of the things that I wanted to ask city staff during this process, um, was with drainage that we see in District Two, one of the greatest threats we have to our drainage system is the illegal dumping. And so I wanted to see if during the budget process, we could look at preventative measures, maybe fencing in some of these things and see if that could be included because it takes a lot of manpower and money out of our budget to, um, to go and unclog and pick up everything and bringing all of the heavy equipment. And I know that that could be solved by adding fences and, you know, preventative measures.
Yeah, we can bring some, some solutions up. Um, we, basically our, our recommended budget is what you'll see on the twentieth, but within that you'll have flexibility.
Wonderful.
And we can bring some thoughts on drainage.
Because every time I ask, they say, oh, you should have brought that up during budget. Well, here I am.
Okay. Yeah, the, the twenty, twenty budget is going to be on the twentieth.
Okay.
Um, and we'll have the ability to talk about how the, what the outlook is for the next twelve months.
Perfect.
There's a certain amount though for that, that type of thing. There's a certain amount that's going to be allocated on a regular basis though, correct?
For, sorry.
For street drainage, this, this type of thing?
Yeah, that's the, that is the seven-eleven number.
Okay.
So basically we can work within that figure. Uh, let me see. Uh, I'll get back here. That's seven-eleven. So we do have an ongoing, um, amount that we dedicate for drainage. So within that potentially, right, we can, we can see, could we substitute some things that we do now with perhaps other types of measures to mitigate what you're describing?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
One, one, something I want to let you know is, uh, in front of this binder, this is the line item details of the budget. It's a lot of information, but this is just a draft that we need to file with the city secretary. Needs to be filed thirty days before we actually adopt the budget. There will be changes, but we, we just need to file it and this is the one that we have.
So in the meantime, if you have any questions, I know you all have to digest this, please let me know, um, and then we'll prepare for the twentieth. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Next we have Work Session B, Strategic Visioning Process.
Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Elizabeth Walker in the office of the City Manager. Next Monday and Tuesday, August twelfth and thirteenth, we will host two workshops on governance and strategic visioning. These will be held at Central Library. My question for you is simple and straightforward. Each of these workshops is expected to last about three hours. Do you prefer to start at five PM or six PM?
Would they, that's, I'm sorry. It's going to be the twelfth and thirteenth, you said?
Yes, Mayor, Monday and Tuesday of next week.
I want to say that's the first day of school. So, um, when we six would be better, but five is okay. Either way.
I can do either.
I'm fine either way.
When are we doing it? Five?
Thirteenth or fourteenth at five or six.
Five.
I think five is probably better.
Twelve and thirteen.
Twelve and thirteen.
Twelve and thirteen.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock is what I hear. Thank you very much. We'll post accordingly.
Five.
So it's five o'clock, right?
Next we have Workshop, uh, Letter C, Cell Phone Policy.
Do we bring it up since it's our item?
Yes, this, this item was requested by Commissioner Cowan and he just wanted to share his thoughts on, on his, on the cell phone policy that would apply to all of us here at the DICE.
Sure, I'd just like to, to bring up, um, something that I think would help us operate more, um, transparently as a board. Um, in my experience as a GPIC board member and as a private citizen, I know there's, um, a lot of communication that, that happens, um, whether it's on, uh, city boards or on the commission, um, during meetings on cell phones. And I think, um, it's, I think we have a responsibility to, um, respect the Texas Open Meetings Act and ensure that there's no question that we are here to work and to make sure that everyone's on task. So I just want to, um, introduce a potential policy to, to make sure that, um, we're doing that and also our boards are doing that.
I would just like to add that I have made my family emergency very transparent and there is no way that I can be without my cell phone near me, um, expecting maybe a call from one of my children or my family. Thank you.
And I think that's, it's completely acceptable. I just think there needs to be a, um, a way we can deal with that.
Do you know if any other cities are doing something similar? No? I'm just saying if we're going to formulate a policy, then we kind of want to look towards an example, if there's any. Mr. DeClos, are you aware of anything?
No, but I can certainly look.
Okay. Anybody have any input on that?
I guess, Mr. DeClos, are you going to look into it and just report back to us?
I can report back to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Next we have our presentations. We have present, the first presentation, Restore Project.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. My name's Lenemariscal. I'm the Water Resource Manager for Brownsville PUB. So thank you for giving us the opportunity, thank you for giving us the opportunity to talk about, uh, our Restore Project. Uh, this is something that we're really excited about. It's been in the works for, for a few years, as you'll see, uh, but this is something that we applied together as co-applicants, the city of Brownsville and PUB. So a little background, the Restore Act of two thousand twelve was, uh, obviously was passed in two thousand twelve as a result of the Deepwater Horizon spill in two thousand ten. The, the spill resulted, it impacted the five Gulf Coast states. So as a result of that, we now, there's funding available for the Gulf Coast states, uh, all five. Uh, here in Texas specifically, the TCEQ, the Texas Commission on Environmental Quality, was tasked with reviewing our applications. There was, uh, a request for proposals that went out in two thousand, uh, two thousand sixteen and, and that's when we applied together, uh, the city of Brownsville, BPUB. Uh, there was different buckets that were available. One of the buckets, the one that we qualified for is Bucket One. At the time, there was about ninety-seven million dollars available for that bucket. There were other buckets, two, three, others were for research and so forth, but the one that we, the, we met the criteria for Bucket One. Okay? So once again, in two thousand sixteen, we applied together. Uh, the title of our project is the Town Resaca Watershed Restoration Project. Uh, it only focuses on the Town Resaca system. Uh, keep in mind that here in Brownsville, there's three large systems, a lot of names, but for the most part, there's three large systems. The Town Resaca system, which is the one that runs, you know, the Porter Park, the zoo, cemetery of the Saka, Resaca de la Guerra, a little further, uh, along, you know, VICC, down to, uh, the airport and then, uh, Resaca de Rancho Viejo, a little further north by the Alton Glor area. But our application was strictly for the Town Resaca system, at least this application. All right? When we, uh, originally applied, we requested, uh, forty-three million dollars for, you know, quite a few improvements. Improvements including some dredging, bank improvements, some stormwater interceptors, some improvements to the Impala pumps, uh, some Impala pump ditch improvements, some land easements, et cetera. So there was quite a, quite, it was a large request at, uh, at, at that time. This is just a quick overview, an illustration of what we applied for. This is what you see in front of you here is the Town Resaca watershed. And, and you'll note that, but, right about here, let's see if I can get this to right, right about here, this is the, uh, Rio Viejo subdivision and then down here, you'll see your Impala pump. So we're looking, our initial request for forty-three million dollars uncovered this entire watershed at that time. Unfortunately, when we submitted that application, we did not make that the state list at that time, uh, back in two thousand sixteen. They drafted a list, there was about twenty projects roughly and our project was not one of them. Uh, but fortunately, there was a, a comment period, open public comment period, and, and as a result of all the comments from the community, uh, shortly after that, we were notified that we actually, we were back on the list. They did have one request though, at that time, and that, that was that we phased out the project. In, in other words, forty-three million dollars was, you know, a little too much. So they asked us to phase it out to look at maybe three to four million, uh, the first year, and so we did. We phased the project out over nine years totaling up to forty-one million dollars, made some revisions along the way. And then ever since two thousand seventeen, what you're going to see here, third submittal, fourth, fourth submittal, fifth and sixth, we've been working with the TCEQ, uh, since two thousand sixteen. They've been requesting data o- over the years, budget detail, you know, tell us about your, uh, you know, your easements and so forth, performance measures. So from two thousand sixteen to now, uh, we've recently been notified that, uh, we're, we're now expecting, uh, uh, some funding. And what you see here is the, how we phased it out, you know, you'll see four phases. Phase one, you're looking at a timeline of about two years. And what we're anticipating for this first phase is four point six million dollars for that, for that first phase. And I'll talk a little bit about that phase. Uh, but then after that, there's some additional phases, two, three and fourth and so forth over a period of nine years. If you look at the totals here, it, you'll note that our, our, uh, requests increase over the, over the next phases. Uh, but we want, we started off with four point six and focusing on an area where we were really, were ready to, to, to begin work. Okay? So just to quick highlights of the phase one, this is what we've been working with the state over the, over the last couple of years. Uh, we're expecting, we're, we're literally working with the TCEQ on drafting the contract at this point. We're, we're, we're in the middle of that discussion for that phase one. Uh, so potentially at latter part of August to maybe early September, we'll see, uh, an official award notification. But we're dra, contracts are being drafted at this point. So the project start date, we're looking a little further latter part of September, maybe October. And our project timeline is for a two-year timeline for, for this first phase one. Uh, another highlight, it'll, it'll fund some personnel, eighteen positions, uh, that are required in order for us to be able to dredge. And then here are some of the other deliverables. Dredging, the Rio Viejo subdivision, some infrastructure improvements, those are some weirs along the, that area, along that Resaca, and then a couple of valves that are, uh, along the, uh, that allow for water into these Resacas. Uh, some bank improvements, there's some bank improvements, uh, as well, and then twelve stormwater interceptors. These stormwater interceptors really are, uh, in areas where you have your storm drains and what these do help capture some of that sediment and, uh, trash and debris going into these Resacas. So this is the, a- after we went back and provided, uh, the different phases, what you see here now is our phase one. You'll note that where before we had a lot of work down over here, since we phased it out, we're now just looking at this, this section up here by the Rio Viejo subdivision. Uh, and as we move on to further phases, then we begin to do some of the work further downstream. So once again, part of the reason why we're up here is because we have our dewatering equipment, uh, near this area. We already have some permits that allow us, port permits that allow us to work up in this area. Uh, and as we move on to later, you know, later phases, we'll, we'll begin to work our way downstream. Just roughly a schedule of what, what we're looking at. Uh, you'll note that, uh, one of the very fir, once we receive the award, one of the very first things we need to concentrate on is, is dredging. And, and we start that from, from the moment we receive our award. And we'll have approximately eighteen months to complete that effort. Uh, outside of that, there'll be some other, uh, engineering design involved, some other scheduling for the stormwater interceptors and for the bank improvements. But this is, this is just a, a timeline of, of our project, twenty-four month project. Just a quick breakdown of, of the budget for that four point six million personnel, you're looking at about eight hundred sixty-two thousand fringe benefits. Contractual, this is a, a big portion of it. This is, uh, we'd be hiring an engineer, you know, to come in and do some of this work. You know, do, do the, the design of the stormwater improvements, the bank improvements, some permitting, uh, that's the bulk of the funding for this first phase. Uh, in addition to that, I mentioned briefly that it, it'll help staffs and personnel. This is staff, uh, needed for the dredging operation. Uh, we're looking at eighteen positions. This is just an illustration of where we need the eighteen. Uh, this is a dewatering equipment that we use in order to dredge and that just lists, illustrates the, the staff that is needed. And then just a little breakdown of the engineering. We're looking at roughly two point six million dollars. A- as I mentioned earlier, this is the bulk of, of the four point six. And this is just a, a rough breakdown, an estimate, uh, of what we're, we'll be looking at. Once again, plans and specs, engineering design, bank improvements, and, and that's where the bulk of the, of the funding will go for our fa, phase one. So moving forward, we're, internally, we're beginning to, to prepare for, for the, to begin our, begin our effort, the transfer of heavy equipment from different departments, uh, doing a little bit of maintenance. We've, we've had a little bit of maintenance over the last couple of years, uh, or over the last year, that is. Uh, some of the equipment we purchased in two thousand twelve, so we're, we're due for some maintenance. We've been spending quite a bit of time on that. We're in the process of transferring or hiring staff, uh, to be, uh, preparation for this funding. Uh, on, our engineering side, RFQs are being drafted to be ready to, uh, to issue out a, an award to, to an engineering firm. And then on the real estate end, there's, there's a little bit of, uh, easements that will be involved. So we, we're beginning, uh, that as well. And then lastly, notifying a few of the residents that'll be impacted. So that's, that's all I have. Any questions on, on the Restore?
Bank and habitat improvements. What do you anticipate that being?
The bank, I'm, I'm sorry?
Bank and habitat improvements?
Yes.
What, what kind of improvements are we?
Yeah, so what we're doing, if, if you take a look at this map here, the, the green area along the Rio Viejo subdivision, what we're doing in there, we're going in there, removing invasive vegetation and, and coming back with native vegetation.
Is, is that, that little peninsula?
Yes.
What is that there? Is that?
That's around the St. Joe, St. Joseph Academy. That's the area where we, there's an opportunity for some of these bank improvements.
So just north of that, there's another green, uh, is that along Resaca Boulevard?
Resaca Boulevard is right about here. If you can see that.
Colorblind, I can't see red. If you had yellow or something, I'd be able to see it. But anyway, it's, it's north of that, right?
And it's east of Resaca Boulevard, just east, the St. Joseph Academy. But Resaca Boulevard is, uh, west of St. Joseph Academy.
So then you're going to re- replace the habitat or the, the?
In base, in base, along the St. Joseph area, there's some invasive vegetation and the reason for doing that, you remove that, you come back in with natives and that helps with the erosion. Uh, native vegetation will do better in promoting, helping with the erosion.
And what do you anticipate for the contractual figure that you're putting there? It's, uh, two million six hundred ninety thousand.
You said, part of that, you said part of that, Mr. Myscall, is going to be engineers, right? But I don't know about the rest.
Yeah, the, the two point six nine, here's a breakdown, uh, slide fourteen of the, of the, the two point six nine. A lot of that is really the, the plans and specs, the engineering design, some of it is bank and habitat.
Improvements. So, so you'll have other people, other than the eighteen people that you're going to hire for phase one, doing the bank and habitat?
That's correct. Uh, the, the eighteen people are strictly for dredging.
Okay.
That's what needed, strictly just to dredge.
I do have a question. Um, I know that the last legislative appropriations request from this last session included the Impala pump, but it wasn't approved. So I'm wondering where in your phases are you going to put in the Impala pump? I know it's in your proposal, but where do you figure it's going to fit in?
So, so the Impala pump, uh, phase two includes the whitening of the Impala pump ditch. Phase two and three, literally working on the Impala pumps, uh, would be at a ladder, the, the phase four, that is.
So later, all the way back? Because I know that-
It's, it's back there.
I know it hasn't been replaced since, what, what year are we talking about? Seventy, sixty, something like that? It's been a long time.
And one of the things that we, we did do is, in talking to the state and talking to some of the city staff, there, there may be an opportunity to move that a little, you know, further up the stages. But the rationale behind having, at least initially, having it a little further is because you, we, the idea was to whiten the ditch that leads to the pumps prior, initially. But there's certainly room for discussion with the, with the state and moving it a little closer.
How does this tie in with the Resaca restoration project that y'all have done? Have another project going on?
Yes, yes, so with, just overall with the Resaca restoration, let me back up to the map. So our initial effort, which began in 2013, well, you're not going to be able to see this, but essentially, we're continuing the work. The, the Resacas adjacent to what we're, to this, where, have already been dredged. So this is really a continuation of what we've already done.
What was the award on the Resaca restoration project that y'all got?
At, at this time, the, just to restore this four point six is literally our first award. However, we, we do have some additional work with the core, where their, you know, feasibility study was completed, and they're recommending a little, little over two hundred and two million dollars worth of improvements. But we, we have, we're not at that stage yet. That'll require some funding from Congress.
Few more phases.
Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, for a presentation, we have the semi-annual impact fee report update.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Commissioners. My name's Marie Leal, and I too, I'm with Brownsville Public Utilities Board, where I serve as Director of Special Projects. Tonight, we're bringing to you the semi-annual impact fee report. But before our consultant does that, we decided to do something slightly different. I'm going to give you a very brief overview of what impact fees are and where they're derived from.
And that's his presentation? Was there a presentation prior to that?
Well, you might not get that brief overview of impact fees.
I got it, the P U V meeting, so I'm good.
Yes, that's right. Robert Ryle is with Arcadis, their consultant, and he will present to you the bi-annual impact fee report. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Commissioners. So as Mrs. Leal introduced, I'm going to walk us through a semi-annual progress report for the Brownsville PUC Water and Waste Water Capital Improvements Fund. So the particular period that we're covering this evening is the second half of last year of, of 2018. So it's the period of July first through December thirty-first of, of 2018. Just a very quick agenda of some of the items that we want to cover. We want to talk a little bit about projects and changes in, in, in projects, additional projects that the P U V is looking to fund. That is a large part of, of impact fees, right, is recovering those costs from new development. And then we want to next look at the service units generated. Essentially, how many connections have we had? How much revenue has been generated from impact fees over this period? And then lastly, we'll look at the fund activity, right? What was the period, beginning balance, we spent some of the money, we earned money, and what, what does the ending balance look like? So this particular figure is a summary of the identified water projects within the capital improvement program. Not all projects, these are projects that are expansion in nature, that will be adding capacity to the system that are necessary for new development. And there's these particular projects which impact fee funds can be applied to. There's limitations on impact fee funds. They can't be used for general operation and maintenance expenditures. They can't be used for projects that are repair or replacement in nature. They have to be used on projects that are expansive in nature. So the total list is a little over thirty-four and a half million dollars. Most of these projects are in the planning stage, which is one of the initial stages of a project, planning, design, construction. So move forward. There's been no changes to the land use assumption plan. That's also a component used in developing the impact fees. The assumption plan is required to be updated every five years per the tax, Texas Chapter three ninety-five, and I understand that the city is in the process of updating the land use plan. It is about five years old, so the, the timing is good for that. The actual impact fees for the water system that were developed in October 2016 or adopted in 2016, for Area One are three hundred dollars, Areas Two and Three, six hundred dollars per equivalent service unit. Area One is, is largely the developed urban core of the city of Brownsville. It's, it's where we are now. Areas Two and Three are more periphery areas where we would expect more growth to be occurring. So, so in general, those are the, the different areas for which the impact fee, the fees were developed. So similar information for wastewater. This is a list of the expansion-related projects from the capital program, which total almost thirty-eight million dollars. Again, many are in the planning stages. There are some lift station expansions, expansions, there's a variety of lift stations. Some are being planned, some are being constructed, so a variety of, of things going on there. Again, the same assumption around the land use plan, updating every five years. We've discussed that, that's in process. The wastewater impact fee per equivalent service unit for Area One is five hundred dollars. For Areas Two and Three, it's one thousand dollars per equivalent service unit. So the, this is a summary of the water connections that were made to the P U V during the period, again, July through December 2018. Just over three hundred connections. If we look at this on an equivalency basis, ESUs, almost five hundred and thirteen equivalencies, an equivalency essentially being a single-family residence. Some meters are larger, some are smaller, you have commercial customers, so we, we look, to look at things on an equivalency basis. The, the impact fee revenue that was assessed for, for water connections is just over two hundred and sixty thousand dollars for the period. For the sewer, the wastewater system, three hundred and forty-nine connections were made during the period on an equivalency basis. This is four hundred and fifty-five equivalent service units, and the impact fee, impact fees assessed for wastewater are three hundred and eighty-eight thousand dollars for the period. This is a summary of the water and wastewater combined impact fee fund. The beginning balance of the period was just over six point three million dollars. The impact fees collected during the six months, seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand, there were some money, monies expended, about eighty-seven thousand dollars, almost forty thousand dollars of interest earnings, with a, a balance in the water and wastewater impact fee fund of almost seven million dollars. And with that, that concludes the presentation, and I'll, I'll see if there are any questions.
Nope, okay.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
At this time, we do have consent agenda items A through E. I would also like to make it known that we did seem, we did receive corrections on the minutes. The corrections were made to the minutes as we discussed with Mr. Decos.
What, what corrections were those?
We had some clerical errors on item number fourteen on the motion, so we corrected it as we heard it on the video and on number eighteen.
Thank you. So I move that we accept the consent agenda, including the, with amendments that have been made to Section Two, or Item Two A.
What were the, what were the items?
You said fourteen and eighteen?
Yes, sir. On, on number fourteen, it was considera-, consideration in action on Resolution 2019-049, and it was to appoint the members for the Historic Preservation and Design Review Board. And the correction was is that we had put on here that the one that had proposed it was Commissioner Tetra. So we made the changes according to the way the video was on there.
There's a misstelling on my name on that number eighteen. I want to correct it. The third line, or fourth line?
Which page, sir?
On eighteen. My last name is spelled.
Yes, we took care of that one, too.
So the one in our package isn't the, the correct one?
No, sir. We did some corrections.
Okay, so I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items with the proposed amendments to the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes.
Next, we have our public hearings. We have public hearing number three, public hearing in action on Resolution Number 2019-064 to authorize the filing of fiscal year 2019, Section 5307, grant proposal with the Federal Transit Administration and Operating Administration of the United States Department of Transportation for federal transportation assistance authorized by 49 U.S.C. Chapter 53, Title 23 United States Code.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commissioners. My name's Norma Samora, I'm the Director for Brownsville Metro. The city of Brownsville, Brownsville Metro is the designated recipient of this Federal Transit Administration Fund, Section 5307, under the Urbanized Area Formula Program. These funds are an annual subsidy provided to the city of Brownsville for the provisions of Brownsville Metro's capital, planning, and operating services. The city of Brownsville, Brownsville Metro posted the program of projects for Section 5307 in the Brownsville Herald and on the Brownsville website on Sunday, June fourteenth, 2019, announcing this evening's public hearing. And as listed in your, in your package, the Section 5307 funding breakdown consists of operating assistance, federal amount of one million five hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety thousand. It's a fifty-fifty match for that grant, so the city's local match for that amount is the same of one million five hundred and sixty-three thousand, nine hundred and ninety, for a total of three million one hundred and twenty-seven, nine hundred and eighty for operating assistance. Under capital, we use the money for preventive maintenance, and that's at an eighty-twenty match. The federal match is one million sixty thousand, three hundred and thirty-two dollars, with the local match for two hundred and twelve thousand, sixty-six dollars, for a total of one million two hundred and seventy-two thousand, three ninety-eight. The short, the planning is for short-range transit planning, and that's also in an eighty-twenty match, the federal amount being twenty-six thousand, five oh eight, with the local amount being five thousand, three oh eight, for a total amount of thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and ten for planning. The total project cost for this grant, federal allocation is two million six hundred and fifty thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars, with a local contribution of one point seven million, one, one million seven hundred and eighty, one thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight, for a total project cost of four million, four hundred and thirty-two, one eighty-eight. The local match is already included in the city's public transit funds for fiscal year 2019 and fiscal year 2020. This is a public hearing, and it's open for questions, and I'm ready to answer any questions.
I move that we approve the resolution.
We have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Hold on.
We need to close the public hearing.
This is a public hearing. I'm sorry.
You need to find out if anybody?
Right, right, right. Is there any speakers on this?
Okay, then I move that we close the public session.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
I move to that we approve the resolution.
We have a motion to approve, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Motion carries.
Next, we have public hearing number four, public hearing in action on Resolution Number 2019-065 to authorize the filing of fiscal year 2019, Section 5339, grant proposal with the Federal Transit Administration and Operating Administration of the United States Department of Transportation for federal transportation assistance authorized by 49 U.S.C. Chapter 53, Title 23 United States Code.
The city of Brownsville and city, and Brownsville Metro is also the designated recipient of this Section 5339 funds under the Bus and Bus Facilities Program. This program funds our annual allocation of federal match for provisions of Brownsville Metro's transportation capital needs. These capital needs include transportation projects that replace, rehabilitate, and purchase buses, vans, and related equipment, construct bus-related facilities, including technology changes or innovations to modify low or no, or no emission vehicles or facilities. The city of Brownsville, Brownsville Metro posted the program of projects for Section 5339 in the Brownsville Herald and on the Brownsville Metro website on Sunday, July fourteenth, 2019, announcing this evening's public hearing. The program of projects for this is, well, for this program for itself, it's important to note that it, it takes two years of funding to replace one bus. So this, this funding will be used to replace one of our two thousand and one heavy-duty buses that we have. And the local amount, and this is an eighty-five fifteen match grant, eighty-five percent is federal and fifteen percent is local, the fifteen, so for a total of local match of fifty-one thousand, eight hundred and fifty-two, total federal allocation, two hundred and ninety-three thousand, eight twenty-five, with the total project cost for this year is three hundred and forty-five, six seventy-seven. And this, the local match for this funding has also been included in, in the city's public transit fund for fiscal year 2019 and fiscal year 2020. And it's, it is a public hearing as well.
If anybody is going to speak on this item?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Do we have any motions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have public hearing number five, public hearing in action on First Reading on Ordinance Number 2019-1656, approving a negotiating resolution between the city and the gas service regarding the company's April thirtieth, 2019, cost of service adjustment, filing clerical existing rates to be unreasonable, adopting new tariffs that reflect rate adjustment consistent with the negotiation settlement, and finding the rates to be set by the attached tariffs to be just and reasonable, providing for the recovery of the city's and TGS reasonable unnecessary rate expenses, adopting a saving clause determining that the ordinance was passed in accordance with the requirements of the Texas Open Meetings Act declaring an effective date, repealing any prior ordinances inconsistent with the ordinance and requiring delivering of this ordinance to the company's and the city's legal counsel.
Good evening again. I'm Elizabeth Walker in the office of the City Manager.
Melissa Lisardi, Office of the City Manager.
And we're here tonight to present the Texas Gas Service Rate Structure. And you may recall that in the first meeting in June, I believe, staff presented to this body about the AEP rate structure, and we had noted at the time that we would be back with Texas Gas Service that would follow a very similar process. And so here we are. On April thirtieth, 2019, Texas Gas Service filed an annual rate increase. This is the second annual expedited limited review rate application filed under the revised tariff that was originally approved in 2017. Lloyd Goslink, Attorneys and Consultants, if the name sounds familiar, it's because they're similarly working with the cities in the AEP rate structure, have reviewed the, the rate increase proposed by Texas Gas Service and have negotiated in good faith a settlement agreement. Their legal fees, I want to note here, are reimbursed through Texas Gas Service. During the negotiations, the parties agreed to reduce the proposed adjustment by approximately half to an amount of seventy-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-seven dollars. And they both agreed that this increase is just and reasonable related to the insurance costs as borne by Texas Gas Service. The new rates are proposed to go into effect for those meter readings on or after July
Under this COSA settlement, the average residential household would see an increase of one dollar and fifty-nine cents a month. With that being said, this ordinance, which is 2019-1656, will finalize the COSA filing. We will approve the negotiated settlement that we had, and it'll be the best rates for the citizens of Brownsville. Thusly, this is a reimbursable matter, and we got consulting expertise along the way. Also, I would like to mention that the Rio Grande Valley Service Area Cities have all approved this ordinance as well.
Do you have any questions for us regarding this?
Questions? Is anybody here on this item?
Then we will note that the AEP rate case, we will bring back at a future meeting, likely as soon as August twentieth.
Close public hearing?
Second?
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Any, all the entertained motions?
Motion to approve.
Second?
We have a motion to approve and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
We have public hearing number six, public hearing in action on First Reading on Ordinance Number 2019-1656 to authorize the city manager to abandon and close portions of a fifteen-inch utility easement and ten inch senatorial. of a 15-inch utility easement at 10-inch Santeri Shore easement, located within Lot 40, Block 4, Roosevelt Estates, Section 5, Phase 2.
Honorable Commissioners, the item before you is to abandon these easements that are no longer needed, and we recommend approval.
Motion to approve? I'm sorry, a motion to close public hearing, if nobody's here.
Any questions or any discussion? Anybody here on this item? Okay. Motion, we have a motion to...
Motion to close public hearing?
Close public hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Entertained motion?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Motion carries, thank you.
We have public hearing number seven. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2019-026 to rezon from light retail G to general retail G for Lot 1, Block 1, Aaron's Edition, located at 2635 Boca Chica Boulevard.
Evening, Mayor and Commissioners, Dawn Warwick, Interim Director for Planning and Development Services. I'll be here a little bit, I think I've got 11 of these for you guys. All right, this first case is a rezoning request. It's specifically removing a specific use permit for the subject property. It's currently zoned light retail to CG, and the request is to rezone to a general retail classification. Property contains one acre, slightly over one acre. Proposed use, the existing use is a bank. It's located at the intersection of Boca Chica and Old Port Isabel Road. The subject property is highlighted here, with surrounding uses identified. I will note that this property, this action, is related to the next one in your package. So, similar, and you'll see that they're very close together. This is the zoning map that indicates the existing property and specific use over it. This identifies the 200-foot buffer to provide notification to adjoining property owners. We did, let's see, did provide 22 mailouts, there was no written opposition to this request. The proposal is consistent with the future land use plan. The City, the Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend approval of this change.
Okay, do we have any questions? So you said this item is related to the next one, or the thing has to do with the parking lot or something?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Why do they want to change zoning if they've been in operation for several years like this?
That's a good question, we asked that as well. It's really more about lifting the special use, or specific use permit.
Okay.
The base zoning, under the current zoning designation, would not allow the bank by right. It required the specific use permit, and it's consistent with the properties surrounding to go to a higher retail classification, so it seemed appropriate since we were also looking at the adjoining parcel for the parking question.
Any other questions? Anybody here on this item?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carries, any motions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Now they're compliant.
Next, we have public hearing number eight. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2019-027 to rezon from Dwelling A to General Retail G for 0.42 acres out of Lot 13, Block 1, Rentfro Terrace Edition of Brownsville, located near Rentfro Boulevard.
This property, as I mentioned, is related to the bank in the previous application. It is, it contains about 0.42 acres. It's currently zoned Dwelling A. The request is to zone the same classification as the bank that you just considered, General Retail G for CG. Property is located near the intersection of Boca Chica and Rentfro Boulevard. You can see the bank property is at the corner, just, oh, here we go. Here. So that's how these two are related, and the purpose of this rezoning is to provide some expanded parking for the bank. It needs to be zoned, the designation that supports the parking. Surrounding uses, to the north, there is a single-family home. Commercial to the east, and then further to the north and south, there are single-family apartments and a mixture of other uses. This is the existing zoning map for this area, and the notification buffer. We did do 20 mailouts for this, there was no written opposition for this request. The proposal is consistent with the city's future land use plan, with, and the Planning Commission did recommend approval, however, they did recommend that there is a conditional overlay, requiring that a minimum six-foot-tall screening fence and a five-foot-wide vegetative buffer be provided on the north side of this future parking lot to protect the residential property to the north.
My only question about this is, that intersection gets very congested. Is there a way to make, so whoever's coming out of the parking lot doesn't come out on Old Port Isabel, they come out on the other side?
They will be coming out on Rentfro. The, there's access to Old Port Isabel, but one of the things that this does, in fact, let me see if I can get to it decently, is provide a way for the parkers, the people that are parking in the existing lot, to exit here instead of at the congested intersection. So this is, this is a way to provide some relief.
Another outlet.
Yes, sir. Another outlet for people who can avoid the intersection and move further west to exit the site.
Is there any way that we could prohibit an exit from the bank going left on Old Port Isabel? Because sometimes I've seen that happen, and I always like, close my eyes thinking there's going to be car accident.
The bank is not proposing any modifications to that particular site, so we're not looking at a development approval for it at this point in time. I don't know that there's a specific requirement, well, I guess we could look at that for the zoning. Yes, because, because...
Because then you're also fighting with the people exiting the Kentucky Fried Chicken.
So we might, we might need to back up a little bit. If we make a requirement that's affecting that parcel, that's the previous action that you just took, approving the ordinance to change the zoning for the bank. If you wanted to place a conditional overlay on that action, on that ordinance, you certainly could do so by reconsidering it, placing the restriction for a no-left turn onto Port Isabel. That was not discussed with the applicant through the Planning Commission process, but it's certainly, you know, a safety issue that you have the authority to consider.
All right, sorry, I should have brought it up earlier.
Can we reopen that item seven?
Item, we recall it.
We all voted for it, so...
Yes, it could be brought back.
Do you want to bring it back?
Is that like, or, I see that happen all the time, and honestly, it freaks me out because there's so much traffic going, I use that intersection a lot.
Well, I think that providing, if this action is approved to allow them to rezone the parcel for additional parking, you're giving them another alternative, so it's certainly within your party.
It should help a lot. I think it would help them a lot, that's a bad exit.
So you might want to act on this ordinance and then recall the previous.
This is also Boca Chica's, the intersection that's having the medians placed in, so...
Right, I was about to say that. So Tech Start is working on Highway 48, on making some median improvements for that very same issue. Not too sure on the schedule, I was looking for Carlos to see if he could give us an update, but yes, Tech Start is working on median improvements on Boca Chica.
I want to say that groundbreaking is within the next 15 to 30 days?
I was looking for Carlos, because I know he has that detailed information, but this is precisely one of the issues that that would help mitigate, right? Okay. Here's Carlos. Could you give us a, you know, the Boca Chica median improvements?
Yeah, good afternoon, yeah, the Tech Start is supposed to be starting, hopefully, I think they said later this month, or September, with that, with that project.
So in the next 30 days?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Thanks.
Okay, do we have any other questions or comments? Anybody here on this item?
Motion to close public hearing?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to close the public hearing, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Motion carries, thank you. Do you want to revisit item seven? Anybody?
What do you all, or, okay, let's just, or like, put it on the record, please, if we can go back to number of the previous one.
Okay, so we have a motion to recall the prior item?
Not yet.
I'm just saying what the proper motion is.
Is it for 30 days? Is recalled for 30 days?
You're talking about the left turn out of the bank. The median is on Boca Chica.
No, on Old Port Isabel.
Yeah. The median is on Old Port Isabel.
Yeah, okay.
Whatever you all want to do, if there's a motion to recall, we can do that.
Well, we also have a second reading, so that, potentially, we brought it in second.
Okay, bring it up and that way there's networks.
Next, we have a public hearing number nine. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2019-028-CO to rezon from Dwelling A to Dwelling G for Lot 19, Block 1, West Banker Place Edition, located at 305 Boca Chica Boulevard.
The current zoning of this parcel is Dwelling A, proposed is Dwelling G. It contains 0.16 acres, and the proposed use is for a duplex. It is, the property is located at the intersection of East Hawthorne Avenue and Boca Chica Boulevard. This is the surrounding property uses and the aerial of the site, the existing zoning, and the notification perimeter, or, excuse me, buffer. There were 23 mailouts for this, no written opposition was received. This proposal is consistent with the future land use plan. The neighborhood to the north is primarily single-family. This property being on Boca Chica is uniquely situated, and with the conditions that the Planning Commission did recommend, staff feels that this is an appropriate rezoning to provide for a duplex at this location. Those conditions include that there be a restriction on access, no more than one driveway facing East Hawthorne Avenue, and no driveway access to Boca Chica. Further, the development should have a single-family residential character. There are ways to design a duplex so that it is appropriately fitted into a neighborhood and has the appearance of a single-family residence, but still provides for two units, and that's what we aim to accomplish with this. Planning Commission unanimously recommended in favor of the zoning change.
Okay, do we have any questions? Anybody here on this item?
Move to close?
We have a motion to close public hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, those opposed? Motion carries, all right.
To approve.
We have a motion to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Next, we have public hearing number 10. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2019-029 to rezon from medium retail A to general retail A for Lot 36, Block 1, Silver Oaks Subdivision, located at 975 West Ruben and Torres Senior Boulevard.
This request is for an existing restaurant within a commercial plaza. It's currently zoned medium retail A, 3CG. The request is to rezone to a 4C, excuse me, 3CA. Request is to rezone to general retail 4CA. The property contains 0.42 acres approximately, and it is an existing restaurant. The proposal is to rezone in order to allow them to have on-premise alcohol sales, wet restaurant.
To do what? The proposed...
On-premise alcohol sales, have a wet restaurant.
Okay.
Yes, sir. This is the aerial of the property. This aerial is a little outdated because the property is developed, as are the lots surrounding it on the east and west. This is the existing zoning and the surrounding zoning for this site. We did send out 24 mailouts, we did not receive written opposition, however, there were, there was one, if not two, speakers that attended the Planning Commission meeting, voicing some concern with regard to what could be built or changed within the zoning classification that was being requested. As you can see, this property does join a single-family neighborhood that's located to the south and surrounding the subject site. The Planning Commission did feel that this was appropriate, it is consistent with the city's future land use plan, and they did recommend unanimously in favor of the change in zoning.
I have a question, what other businesses are next to it?
That's a good question.
You have Taqueria Checos?
Checos.
Checos and Las Tabitas, I believe, Porta Las Tabitas.
Is there any issue, is that a church across the street? Is there any issue about that? Or are we solving that issue by granting it?
We're solving the issue, so 4C allows.
So, well, they're within 1,000 feet by granting it, okay.
My only concern whenever we see this is if they're going to have loud music, that would affect those neighbors, because we get this complaint very often after we allow this. I can tell you that I've been receiving tons of complaints in another area of District 2 over this, and I just want to make sure that it's one thing to allow a restaurant to sell alcohol, but it's another thing to allow it to be kind of a nighttime environment with loud music.
We could impose noise restrictions, if that's a concern, or hours of operation. However, this is more like a taqueria style, so we're not as concerned with the noise.
I think there's a noise ordinance that would probably cover that.
That could also come to...
Okay, any other questions? Anybody here on this item? Okay.
Move to close public hearing?
We have a motion to close public hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Motion carries, do I have any motions?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have public hearing number 11. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2019-030 to rezon from Dwelling A to Dwelling G for Lot 35, Block 50, East Brownsville Edition, located at 3475 East 27th Street.
This rezoning is a request to accommodate a proposed duplex. The current zoning is Dwelling A, and the request is to rezone to Dwelling G. Property contains 0.14 acres approximately, and it fronts East 27th Street. It is in a fairly solid, single-family zoned neighborhood, but you can see through the zoning map that there are other exceptions that have been made with regard to granting this type of use to allow some duplexes within the neighborhood. This is the buffer of properties that was notified, that included 31 mailouts. The city received no written opposition to this request. It is, it is consistent with the city's future land use plan. The Planning and Zoning Commission voted unanimously to recommend in favor of this rezoning.
There wasn't any complaints?
Yes, sir.
No? Okay. All right. Any other questions? Do we have anybody here on this item?
Move to close public hearing?
We have a motion to close public hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve?
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have public hearing number 12. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number 235-2019-031-S to allow duplex, a Dwelling D use, and light industrial J for Lot 12, Block 43-A, Stillman Edition, located at 221 West St. Francis Street.
This property is currently zoned light industrial. The request is to rezone in order to accommodate a duplex. It can, I'm sorry. Oh, thank you. The request is for a specific use permit, not a rezoning, to allow for a duplex within the base zoning district. It contains just over a quarter acre in size, property is over a quarter acre in size, and is located at West 2nd Street and West St. Francis. These are the surrounding properties. This, of course, is in our downtown area. Properties indicated here were provided notice. I think this is probably the map that best describes what's going on here. Some of the older parcels within the city in the old downtown area carry an industrial designation because they were proximate to an active rail line, and that's basically just historically been in place. These properties with a specific use permit may be developed as a duplex. I think that in the future, there may be some cleanup that could be done here, but this is consistent with other actions, and many of the parcels but this is consistent with other actions and many of the parcels within the neighborhood have obtained a similar approval. We did do thirty-five mailouts to adjoining property owners with this particular application. We received no written opposition and the planning commission found this to be consistent with the future land use plan and recommended unanimously in favor of the specific use permit for a duplex.
Okay, do we have any questions? Do we have anybody here on this item? We have a motion to close public hearing?
Move to close?
We have a motion to close, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay. Any motions?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve in a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have public hearing number thirteen. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty nineteen dash zero thirty-two to rezone from general retail F to general retail H for lot one, rear half of lot number two, block one fifty-eight, Brownsville Original Town Site located at seven fifty-four East Banbury Street.
This request is for a change in the area district. The use district, which is general retail, is remaining the same, but the proposed action is to rezone to a four C H. And what that does is relax some of the setback requirements and allow for a larger footprint on the property. But it does not change the uses permitted in this location. The property itself, located at seven fifty-four East Banbury, contains point two seven five five acres and the proposed use is for office. This is where it sits, it's an L-shaped parcel and surrounded by a neighborhood that's fairly eclectic. There are a variety of zoning, zoning designations or land uses surrounding the parcel.
What is it they're planning to do on that?
Offices.
They're going to expand that office that's there?
They're either going to expand what's there or tear down and rebuild. The desire is that they have some additional space.
So it's just a setback?
It is the setbacks, yes, sir.
That was my question, actually, if it was a vacant lot or not? Because I think, man, there's a, there's an office on this corner, isn't there?
It looks like it.
It looks like there's something there currently and so they would be able to expand their existing footprint or if they wanted to rebuild, they'd have a little bit of additional space with some relaxed setbacks, side and rear setbacks.
So Reese's office?
I think that's her.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. Surrounding property owners were noticed. We did not receive any written opposition. The planning commission found this to be consistent with the future land use plan and recommended unanimously in favor of the rezoning.
Do we have any questions from the commission? Do we have anybody here on this item?
I'll move to close.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing, any discussion?
Aye.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'll move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have public hearing number fourteen. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty nineteen dash zero thirty-three dash S to allow restaurant and light retail use in apartment H and professional office H for lots one and two, block one, Alvarado Subdivision located at three thirty-four Morning Side Road.
This application is for a specific use permit. It is not a change in zoning, but it is a specific use permit that would allow for restaurant on this site. Property contains point six-three acres approximately located at three three four Morning Side Road. The proposed use is restaurant. This gives you an indication of the surrounding uses and I understand that the property previously was utilized as a daycare facility and they're wanting to convert that business into a restaurant use.
There's an existing structure there?
Yes.
Okay.
These property owners were notified. We did not receive any written opposition to this specific use permit. The planning commission did find it consistent with the future land use plan and recommended unanimously in favor of the change.
Any questions? Anybody here on this item? Okay. We have a motion to close public hearing?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any motions?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have public hearing number fifteen. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty nineteen dash zero thirty-four to rezone from general retail A to, and dwelling A to general, general retail G for a three point two eighty-one acre tract of block double D and a portion of a unsubdivided tract in the Brownsville Land and Improvement Company subdivision located at nineteen oh four Central Boulevard.
Alright, the current zoning of this parcel is general retail A and dwelling D A. The request is to rezone the entire parcel to a general retail designation four C G. The property contains three point two acres and proposed is a commercial plaza fronting Central Boulevard. This is, the surrounding uses are basically commercial to the north and west, single-family and a mixture to the east and south. This is the current zoning in the area. These properties were notified and, let's see. I believe that we did have, we did not have mailed up, any mail-in opposition to this request. I believe we did have one, if not two, individuals at the planning commission. Their main question was what will happen in this development? General retail zoning allows for a variety of different uses while the proposed is a commercial plaza. I think that adjoining residents would, would like to have more assurances as to the specific use, but our zoning does not mandate us to, does not mandate the applicant to lock in that particular use at the time of zoning. It would be, any uses that are allowed within the zoning designation would be able to be built. Don't think that there were any other conditions that were, but the planning commission did find this to be consistent with the future land use plan and did vote unanimously to recommend approval of the change in zoning.
Okay, do we have any questions? Is anybody here on this item?
Do you need to speak, Mr. Ritter?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. Alright. Hearing, I don't think there's any questions, so we have a motion to close public hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Oh, no, I'm not opposed, I just was not affected.
Do I have any motions?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve? Another second? A second? Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Thank you.
Next, we have public hearing number sixteen. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty nineteen dash zero thirty-five to rezone from dwelling A to dwelling G for lot seven, block seventeen, Ebony Heights subdivision located at fourteen sixty-four Yale Avenue.
The request for this rezoning is a change in their area designation. It's currently dwelling A, D A, and the request is to rezone to dwelling G, D G. The proposed action is to add a carport at this property at fourteen sixty-four Yale Avenue. It's in a single-family neighborhood surrounded by single-family homes. The zoning reflects the same. I, I think that it is relevant to note that there are some carports within this neighborhood. Whether they're there with proper approvals or not, there are some existing as evident in that aerial photograph. The property owners adjacent to this site were notified, there are thirty-four mailouts. We did not receive written opposition. We did have a couple of calls to the office with concerns about carports and, but we did not have any formal presentation to the planning commission or written, but I think it's important to note that the office was contacted. The planning commission, however, found that the application and the proposal were consistent with the future land use plan and recommended unanimously in favor of the rezoning.
So this is the second item I see where they're rezoning based on setbacks. Is there, is this the best way to do that or is there another way to do that?
Right now, this is probably the best way to do that. In most of these situations, pursuing a variance to relieve the setbacks would not be advisable because there's no specific hardship that can be proven.
Alright, any other questions? Do we have anybody here on this item? We have a motion to close public hearing?
Close.
We have a motion?
Somebody here?
We have someone for a public hearing.
Yes, sir. Come on up, please.
Would you please come to the podium, state your name?
Right there. Just please state your name, sir. When you get up there.
Good afternoon.
Hi.
Okay, we, I don't know where to start at this point. Basically, it was put in there illegally. This should have been done before, correct?
I don't know what you're talking about, sir, I'm sorry.
She didn't present that part?
Would you speak up a little louder and give your name?
My name is Jose Vasquez. I'm an owner of Yale. I hate coming to do this, but the fact is that it was built without permission and now it's being passed.
Okay.
So it should have first been passed and then given permission. And the problem is that, yes, there is carports there, but this carport is all the way to the front, which was failed to mention. Basically, there's uniformity in the neighborhood. It's a Brownsville representation. It's right next to Saint Mary's, it's right next to the, to the baseball fields. You know, it's Brownsville. And if you start just building your carports all the way to the front, then you're going to basically lose that openness. The whole environment is different. You're going to enforce it or not, I understand, but the fact is that it's changing it. This is an open neighborhood, it was traditionally that way and it seems like you're losing the Brownsville environment. It's old neighborhood. As far as I remember, it used to be a place where the, well, the wealthier would live there, close to Saint Mary's.
You're saying that it already has been built?
Yes, sir.
Is it a covered, is it just a covered garage or is it enclosed?
And I don't understand the neighborhood, I mean, it's all the way to the fence line.
Was law enforcement ever contacted when that was done?
Did you ever make a complaint?
As far as I was told when I called in, they said that there was a complaint and it was, and that was the reason that this, you want to go ahead and tell us?
Sure. Oftentimes, these become actions or requests of the planning commission because there's been a complaint and this is one of the ways that a property owner can pursue a remedy to that complaint. I think it's important to note that the modification of setbacks that would allow for the carport in this instance does not modify the front setback. So if the, if the front is, as indicated, very close to the street, we probably do need to go and take a look to determine if there's a setback violation that would be present regardless of the zoning action because that needs to be resolved.
So you're saying that, I'm sorry, Mr. Commissioner, go ahead.
So just, so we need, still need to go and inspect it?
Yes, we will send somebody out and have them inspect the location of the carport with regard to the front property line.
So should we just table this for now and let them do that?
That contradicts what I was told. Initially, I was told that he has been penalized, he has been.
He's never been cited, in other words.
He was cited.
He was?
That's what I was told when I called. That he was cited and that's why he's.
But she's saying.
Passed this so that he can have.
Was he cited for the front setback or the side setback?
Both, the side and the front.
Do we, we don't have anybody here.
Does the city? Do you know? Okay.
So I think it would be important to table the item, but also bring back all of the facts if this is not in compliance and bring photos to the commission so we can know what we are approving and allowing to be built in these neighborhoods.
And we can't set a precedent of letting people go build and they coming and cure it later.
Those rules are there for a reason.
Okay.
Oftentimes, that is, times that is how we get cases, is a property is cited for failing to comply with zoning and in order to remedy that, they're given a certain period of time to either take down the building or pursue some type of action that would make it compliant. We can't stop them from pursuing that action. That's, that's certainly their right. But we do need you all to understand what the circumstances are and so we can bring back additional information so that you can see what's on the ground today and what's being requested.
Right, we just didn't know the circumstances until Mr. Vasquez came up here. Thank you, sir.
That's why it's a public hearing.
That's why it's a public hearing.
I have a, I have a question. What's proposed is what is currently being, what the standard is on that street, right? Like the type of carport?
I got no problems with she saying that there's some already there, you know, I understand. They were done, I don't know if they were had, they were original, I'm not familiar with the law or what was there, but the fact is, you know, there's a certain point where we have to say, you know, okay, when is it wrong?
Okay, but.
If it was originally in the restrictions of the initial building, then if it was okay then, it's still okay.
But if they were cited, it wasn't.
Right, exactly.
So we should know what they were cited for and see if it's even going to cure that because if it's the side or the front, it makes a difference.
I think it's important you know all the facts.
Thank you, thanks, I appreciate that, thanks, Steve.
Do we move to table? Okay, move to close. Move to close.
Anybody else here on this item? We have one other person here? Yes, come on up, if you'd like to speak, sure. Just tell us your name, please.
I'm Lupita Vasquez. The thing is that this is a traditional, uniform neighborhood, right? And yes, there are carports, but they're all at a certain limit and this one just extends way over. So it makes the uniformity, you know, that traditional Brownsville, you know, old, you know, we want to keep, at least I, I love Brownsville. I was born here in Brownsville. I won't go anywhere else. I'm a teacher, I teach at Brownsville. I mean, I love my kids, I love everything. So when I see something traditional, you know, that follows a certain pattern that makes it look nice, you know, you would want to keep this, you know? But when we start seeing, and yes, there are carports, but they're all at a certain level. But this one extends over, so I mean, it's very obvious you are going, whoa. Okay, and it was already built, so it's not finished.
Is it an enclosed carport?
It's not enclosed, it's just open, but they started putting pillars and, and then I believe that's when they were cited because my husband and I had called and they said, oh, no, because, because we have a carport also in another home, right? And we had, we got our permit, we went by everything, you know, and somehow I feel, like you're saying, if certain people go by the rules, why is it okay to, you know, for people that are not following our rules? We want to make Brownsville beautiful and if we, you know, we kind of do things like this, it'll just destroy our traditional old neighborhoods. And that area where the post office is at and all that, it's nice, if you go in there, it's nice. They're all, the houses are uniform and everything and I just believe that we should keep it uniform. You know, keep Brownsville, our traditional areas. Yes, we have our modern areas, but we also have our traditional areas that we like to remember and say, hey, look, you know, we have, yes, we do have, you know, downtown Brownsville, we also have our neighborhoods. So I, you know, I like to ask that, you know, that be considered, you know? Trying to keep these traditional neighborhoods, say, hey, look, this is nice uniform, the houses are nice and uniform. It's nice and clean and clean, again, it's not upper level, you know, like very high-end neighborhood, but it's uniform and it does show our roots and our traditions, so, you know, that's why my husband and I are here.
I appreciate that, thanks. So the issue's really just the setbacks in the front, it sounds like, so we need a little bit more information.
But it may be that they, the other garage was made into a room and now they're going with a new, another garage or something. So that's why we, we need to see some pictures or something.
Thank you, appreciate your time.
Thanks for coming. Do we have any, do we have a motion to table?
Yes.
I think we need to close the public hearing.
Motion to close public hearing.
We have a motion to close.
I'll make that motion.
We have a motion and a second to close public hearing, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, do we have any motions?
We move to table this item for the next meeting.
We have a motion and a second to table, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Table, thanks.
Next, we have public hearing number seventeen. Public hearing in action on first reading on ordinance number two thirty-five dash twenty nineteen dash six zero one dash C U and ordinance allowing a conditional use permit for a wet restaurant for lots one and two, block forty-nine, Original Town Site of the City of Brownsville located at three fifty-four East Elizabeth Street.
This is a request for a conditional use permit to allow a wet restaurant. Property is just, oh, well, point two seven five five acres. It's a pretty standard lot size here in Brownsville, I've seen that four times tonight. So it's a wet, it's proposed to be a wet restaurant. The existing zoning is three C F, medium retail, and the property fronts East Elizabeth Street. This is the zoning map and the proximity. So this is another downtown neighborhood with a variety of uses surrounding. This is an existing restaurant and it's, I think, at the corner of Fourth and Elizabeth. This is an existing restaurant, and it's, I think, at the corner of Fourth and Elizabeth.
That's the old Palo Alto?
Yes.
Yep. It's a restaurant now, so they don't have a license?
They do not have a liquor license right now. So they're a dry restaurant, and they're proposing to, for this conditional use permit, and the purpose is so that they can sell alcohol on premise.
Okay. Do you have anybody here on the side? Any questions?
Motion to close, public hearing.
We have a motion to close public hearing in a second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Motion carries, thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have our public comment period. The first one that I do have is Mr. Jared Garcia. Would you please come forward?
I think they left, maybe.
Okay, I'll go on to the next one. We do have Alexandra Avila. Would you please come forward? The next one that we have is Mr. Eugene Fernandez. Would you please come forward?
My name is Eugene Fernandez, and I'm here wearing two hats. One of them in particular is my official capacity with the Cameron County Historical Commission, and the second one is that I'm wearing the hat of my heart, because this is a very, very sensitive issue. A very dear one, especially to Ms. Golonsky here, I think it's your district?
Yes.
And it is actually my mission tonight to bring an awareness of the fact that there is a significant problem with our cypresses that are down in that reserve. There is ten percent of them that have died within the last year and a half. This may not be common knowledge to very many people at all other than the people that are directly associated with the, with that project down there. I've been associated with that project for thirteen years. And you might say that the cypresses appointed me to speak for them. If a tree falls in the forest, does anyone hear it? Well, yeah, they tell me to tell you. So that's, please, the project has to be expedited. The water has, on the cypress in particular, the water level there is about twenty-five feet. Cypress needs their toe in the water in order to survive. And can you imagine the collective years of those nine cypresses that have died? If you put them end on end, you would go back to the time of Christ. One in particular has a circumference of twenty-one feet. It's over three hundred years old, and it died for lack of water. Please, expedite the program to get water back into that Resaca, the Resaca de la Palma in there. And if any of you want a tour of the property and to want to know that you've got a packet in front of you with the history of it, please call me, because if, once you see a tree with a circumference of twelve feet lying on its side, it'll get your attention. Thank you, and please remain in touch with me on this.
Jean, you said how many?
Nine.
In the last what?
Year and a half.
City manager, is there any way that you can get our tree services out there and see what they can do to immediately help those trees?
This is an item on the agenda, isn't it? No, I thought I read something else.
It's a comment only, but my point is, please communicate with me.
I know we have a tree expert on staff, if you could get him out there.
Roy Reyes was out there, I called him in Saturday, as well as Dr. McDonald of U T R G V, Edinburgh, and there is a statement in my packet there, and he's further available to talk on this. There is a defined solution on this. Please, let's pursue it. Because if anyone came on the news media and said that ten percent to twelve percent of the trees there in the Riverwalk in San Antonio, it's Taxodium disticum, this is Taxodium mucronatum. If twelve percent of the trees on the Riverwalk were to die, what would that do to the news? That would be astounding. And we have, actually, we have a potential Riverwalk right here, the things that are being developed there, but we just need to speed it up, please. Thank you.
Thanks.
So just by coincidence, I toured District One with Commissioner Golonsky last Friday. We drove into the property, I got to see them firsthand, and I sent the commission an update yesterday on that. So it's a work in progress. Eva Garcia and park staff are aware. We are working with P U B on this, so it's basically a matter of time. So we'll make sure to expedite what we can, but I did send that update, and we'll check in.
Meanwhile, in the process, can you water those trees? Or is that not something we can do?
There might be a way, we can ask.
Water hose.
That's... Yeah, that's not my area, but we can ask the question, yes.
Okay.
At this time, Mayor, I do have two other people that signed up for public comment. It is an agenda item, but as per your House Bill twenty forty, we can go ahead and allow them to speak if you would allow that?
Sure, and it is state law to allow them to speak. We just haven't approved an ordinance, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, can we bring an ordinance in the near future?
Mayor, I think those who become enforceable, they become operational after September.
Say that again?
I believe those become operational after September.
September first, probably.
September first, so...
So we don't need anything?
I'm sorry, no, what I'm saying is that new law does not come into effect until September.
But it's our policy, so if we want to suspend the rule, maybe we could have a motion to suspend the policy and then allow it.
We're less than a month out. It's okay with me. Somebody wants to move to suspend, then it's fine with me.
Okay. One of them is Mr. Luis Rodriguez. If you would please come up? Okay. Well, the next person that I have is Mr. Juan Rene Hernandez.
So then I'll make a motion to suspend the policy on public comment regarding commenting on items that are on the agenda.
I'm not sure that we should vote on items that have not been placed on the agenda and posted with proper notice.
But it's a public comment.
I understand. It's, we need to, anything that we vote, we need to give advance publishing seventy-two hours into that.
Well, we don't want to violate time enough.
Well, I'm just giving you some guidance, but, you know, the commission can...
So what's your recommendation, then, counsel?
That we don't allow this until, until we either make a proper motion and notice and the hearing, and/or after September first, when the new law kicks in.
But it's on the agenda, right? Will they still have a time to, they still have an opportunity to speak to it?
Well, that is a problem. I don't think he, I don't think we should allow it, but, but again, that's, that's mine.
When the item comes up, you can't either. It's not a public hearing.
Yeah, exactly.
Can't you open up for discussion?
What item is it?
Not public discussion, only commission.
Thirty-three.
Well, we heard from you last time, right?
Yeah.
So same presentation?
No, actually, no, it was just...
I'm sorry, this time, I think, unfortunately, because of the way the rules work and because of potential violations that we're being made aware of, I don't think we can hear the item, I'm sorry.
What about not me, but other gentleman?
No, it's not, it's not just you, it's the item in general. I'm sorry, but we know where you're coming from.
Okay.
Appreciate the presentation last time as well. Thank you.
Next, we'll move on to items for individual consideration. We have action item number nineteen. Consideration action on resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero fifty-seven to appoint an alternate member to the Rio Grande Valley Metropolitan Technical Advisory Committee.
Mayor, commission members at the July second meeting, you all did appoint Mr. Mark Lund as the TAC appointee. There is no alternate, and just in case Mark cannot attend, we were recommending that an alternate be appointed, who we would recommend because of her background with transit, was Ms. Norma Zamora, to represent Mark in case he can't attend.
I'll make that motion to appoint Norma Zamora.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carries?
Next, we have action item number twenty. Consideration action on resolution number twenty nineteen dash zero fifty-nine to accept resignation, removing and appoint a member of members to the Paseo de la Resaca Landscaping and Lightning Maintenance District Board. At this time, these are the members that we currently have on the board.
I think Commissioner Tetra resigned the last meeting, didn't she?
I did, yes. I mean, like verbally, it's too much. It's very hard.
Whose district is this?
Mine. But I would recommend that Joel Mungia take over, because that overlaps two and three, and it's very important that the residents of that area have a commissioner that they have access to. So, I don't know if I can make, can I make a motion to appoint Commissioner Mungia?
Well, you can first accept the resignation, and then appoint once the vacancy is there, unless the vacancy is already there, then we can move to appoint. I know there's some process and procedures that they're trying to lay down in regards to applying and the naming of some of these, but since it's another commissioner, I don't see a problem.
So, yes?
Yeah, is it properly posted?
Well, yes, the removing and/or the appointment of a member, yes, has been properly posted.
So, whose resignation are we accepting? Commissioner Tetra's?
Mine. So, do we have to vote on that?
Well, that's the way the item was posted.
Right, it's an action item.
So, you can accept the resignation, and then at that point fill the vacancy.
So I'll, I'll move to make my resignation and appoint Commissioner Joel Mungia.
We have a motion, accepting Commissioner Tetra's resignation and appointing Commissioner Mungia. Do you have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion carries?
We also have another member that she turned in her resignation on June the twelfth, which is Ms. Nancy Meidinger.
Okay. So then, do I have a motion to accept the resignation of Nancy Meidinger?
I'll move.
A motion, do you have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
And we did receive an application for Ms. Nicole H. Garcia.
Gracias.
Yeah, I'm sorry, gracias.
I can't see either.
Okay, do you have a motion to appoint Ms. Nicole Garcia then? To fill...
Second?
Okay, we have a motion?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion and a second? Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
I'm not opposing, I just was not fast enough.
Motion carries, thank you.
Next, we have action item number twenty-one. Consideration action to create commission subcommittees for Planning and Redevelopment Services Code and Processes Improvement Project.
Good evening. This action item is a request to form a couple of subcommittees of the commission in order to work with the planning and redevelopment team and the Fries and Nichols team on a couple of, you think, pretty important projects to address improvements to the codes and processes related to both zoning and building slash fire codes. So the structure that the city manager's office is interested in suggesting is to have two subcommittees. One would be focused on zoning, land use, and subdivision codes and processes. So one of our efforts is to evaluate the codes, the land use requirements, but also, at the same time, to kind of run a parallel process of looking at the processes, you know, whether that has to do with filing an application for a zoning change or a building permit. So that is one of the subcommittees. And the second would be related very similarly, but focused on building and fire codes. So building and trade codes, there's a family of codes today. We have in place the twenty-twelve version of the International Building Code and all of its family members that are related, so fuel and gas, plumbing, electrical. And we're looking to move to the codes in the twenty-fifteen series of codes. And so there are, of course, processes related to the building and fire codes as well as the zoning and subdivisions. So I think the proposal is that the commission divide themselves in their interest areas. We would be working with the commission subcommittees on a, we may not have a set schedule, but we want to make sure that there are commissioners that are interested and plugged into the work that we're doing as they relate to these two subject areas. And we will provide an overview and then periodic updates as to the progress that we make as we go through a diagnostic review of the existing codes and processes and recommendations for changes. We want to make sure that we have commissioners that are along for the ride as we, as we go through this process. It will take quite a few months. We anticipate at least a year of digging deep into the existing codes and regulations and, you know, developing some best practices and a good outcome for the city of Brownsville. These will, these codes will all need to be tailored to the needs of this community. So we want your voice to be part of that. We believe it will help to ensure that we're getting guidance from you along the way, and also that we have your endorsement when we get to the end of the process and need to go through an adoption.
Who's going to appoint these?
Well, the thought, Mayor, is that the commissioners self-select which area they have an affinity for. I think the code is one area in and of itself, and the rest is land use, zoning, subdivision.
Okay. Three and three?
Three and three because of form issues.
Okay.
So three and three, and the way we designed it, the mayor would basically float and, you know, visit with both and kind of just oversee the overarching process. And at the very end of the process, what we're trying to do is have a self-reporting mechanism to where you all kind of say, okay, this is what we worked on, this is what we worked on, this is how they work together in concert. And then, at that point, basically, get to the approval process.
I think Commissioner Nees definitely has to be on the one involving building and fire codes.
I think so, just based on what I've heard from him, he has a lot of interest in it.
You can count on me for that one.
Thank you.
So then, do you, how do you want?
Self-select.
So is it Planning and Redevelopment Services and then Code and Process Improvement Project? Those are the two, because it's not real clear.
No, it's actually, it's building and fire, and then zoning, land use and development, right?
Okay, but your item there...
It's not, yeah, the item doesn't state those two committee names.
It says processes improvements, because if you look at the language in the memo, both?
So then, it's, so the two are Planning and Redevelopment Services Code and then Process Improvement Project?
No, there's two pages to the memo, and so you get a summary and then a description of the first subcommittee on the first page at the bottom, Subcommittee on Zoning, Land Use, and Subdivision Codes and Processes. Then if you switch to the next page, you should have a brief description of a subcommittee on building and fire codes and processes.
Commissioner Nees is looking at the way it was noticed.
On the item, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, what we intend to basically note there is that both subcommittees are going to discuss what we're doing to streamline our processes. That's what that refers to. However, in terms of subject matter, you're going to have codes and cert ordinances. But we just want to make sure that both committees understand how we're going to streamline our processes.
So it's really about land development regulations and building codes?
Right.
So, that's the choice.
Do we just pick?
Well, I think there's some natural fits, but if y'all, I was just going to actually divide it. If it was up to me, I would have divided it this way with land use, because John, obviously, Jessica, you all know about that. And then, I know Ben would have been great on building and fire.[1636.62]
I'll accept that appointment.
Yeah.
We'll do it that way. So you wanna go codes here and land development here?
I think that would be the, the best fits.
Okay.
Done? Thank you.
Thanks.
Oh, I think we need to actually.
We had, we had a motion.
I'm, I'll move to, uh, to, uh, create the committees as stated by the mayor.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Motion carries.
Next, we have action item number twenty-two, consideration action and possible action on resolution number twenty-nineteen dash zero seven eight to appoint members to the animal shelter advisory committee.
Honorable Mayor, Commissioners, good evening. Uh, before you tonight, we have, uh, the animal shelter advisory committee. Some changes that have occurred is the city now has a veterinarian part-time. So that is one position that we intend to use our internal vet to be able to, uh, serve on that committee. We do have an applicant, uh, the next page, who is interested. And then also, we have a vacancy for a commissioner, as a previous commissioner was Commissioner Lawdoria.
There's, um, the previous committee, they've all termed out.
Correct.
So, uh, I know that there's been, as of the meeting, there was three applicants, I believe?
We, I could be incorrect, but I followed up with city secretaries and I only had one.
Yeah, no, the new ones were added up. That's what we received. This one's up to date.
So it is up to date?
Yes.
One, three?
Oh, I did not see that earlier.
Sorry.
How many do we have to appoint?
Three.
Three?
Yes.
Three individuals and a commissioner, is that correct?
Correct. And, uh, but the only one I can, I did for my background was with Alupe Campesgo Vels, and not serving in any other current board at this time. I cannot speak for the other two names. Uh, I would have to defer to the city secretaries, whether they're current.
So right now, you recommend we make one appointment and leave the other two open?
I would go with all three contingent, that they're not serving in a conflicting board.
Okay, I'll, so move, I'll move that way.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Then I would like to have a variety, like, I think it's a big issue in District One, and I would like to, I, I'm thinking of some people, I just need to ask them if they would like to be appointed. Um, so.
Mr. Riz.
Because we're all District Three.
The prior slide showed that there was definitely more than three people on there.
Yeah, so there's definitely, uh, room for, uh, one more member.
There was six.
The, the.
Actually more, seven.
Doctor Stanfield would be, was the veterinarian, he passed away.
Right.
Uh, so that's now, would be Dr. Stevens. Uh, the commissioner slot would be for the commissioner, of course, that this body chooses to place on there. And then the, uh, we do have a need to have in local animal rescue capacity serve on the board. And then, uh, everyone else would be a, uh, citizen.
Okay, so there's more, definitely more than three.
Yes, there is an opportunity.
Three spaces, so we can approve them, and so I'd encourage somebody from District One.
Okay.
Okay.
Move to.
We had a motion to approve the three candidates that applied and a second, uh, any further discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
So I'll also make the motion to appoint Commissioner Mungia, that's his area, and we all know that he's a very big dog and cat advocate. So I'll make the motion to appoint Commissioner Mungia.
We have a motion to appoint Commissioner Mungia. Do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, uh, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Did you want it, Joel?
You know, uh, my wife loves dogs more than I do, so.
Okay.
Pretty sure that.
Okay.
If you didn't accept it, you'd be in the doghouse.
That's right.
I appreciate your.
He has a Great Dane that's literally the size of a horse, so I know he'll do good.
Thank you, Mr. Riz.
Next, we have action item number twenty-three, consideration action to ratify the Greater Brownsville Incentives Corporation bylaws to increase board members from five to seven members.
Uh, yes, Mayor Commissioners, this item is essentially a ratification. There has been a decision back in January twenty-eighteen, I believe, by G-Big Two increase the membership. So if the commission so desires to ratify that action, you can, essentially increasing the board by two members.
Okay. Do we have any motions?
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve, do you have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have action item number twenty-four, consideration action on resolution number twenty-nineteen dash zero seven two to appoint members to the Greater Brownsville Incentives Corporation.
I move to table it until Dr. Gowen comes back so that she can participate in this process.
Okay, motion to table?
A second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Uh, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, tabled.
Next, we have action item number twenty-five, consideration action on resolution number twenty-nineteen dash zero seven three to appoint members to the Ethics Commission.
So Commissioner Neese and I believe Commissioner Galonski have made appointments. Um, my appointment will be Judge, uh, former federal Judge Felix Gracio. Anybody else have their appointments?
Appointment for?
For the Ethics Commission.
I'll appoint Martin Sarquis.
Okay. Martin Sarquis. Anybody else?
I'd like to appoint David Merrill.
David Merrill, okay.
Good choice.
Good pick.
Uh, I don't have anybody at this time.
Okay. Go ahead and wait on Commissioner Tetra's appointment. Is that something she can send in? Counsel?
We can, uh, I don't see a reason why we cannot.
Is this an action item?
Or we can just bring it back for the next session, we're meeting next week.
We'll bring it back.
Bring it back, so Dr. Gowen will be here as well.
Just the whole item together?
Bring it again.
Or we can have.
Well, you have four so far.
Sure, sure, okay.
And then vacancy.
Okay.
Bring in on the rest.
Okay. Do you have a motion then to approve the, uh, the nominations as presented?
Five. We have five, that leaves two open, right?
Move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the nominations as presented, do you have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
I'm just cu- I'm curious, though, like, is this, cause it seems like we all voted, um, nominated lawyers, right? Is Ms.?
No.
He's not? Okay, sorry, my bad. Okay, sorry. Never mind then.
Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
Next, we have action item number twenty-six, consideration action directing the Ethics Commission to create the Ethics Commission bylaws.
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do you have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have action item number twenty-seven, consideration action on resolution number twenty-nineteen dash zero seven four to appoint members to the Board of Adjustment.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and City Commissioners, I'm Mirdna Leal. I'm a planner with the Planning and Redevelopment Services Department, and we are here to appoint two members, we have two openings to the Board of Adjustment. The Board of Adjustment is a quasi-judicial board that may grant variances, special exceptions, and hear appeals from administrative decisions regarding chapter three forty-eight zoning and all adopted codes of the Brownsville Code of Ordinances. The Board of Adjustment is made up of five regular members and can have up to four alternate members. Currently, we have one regular member whose term has expired and one alternate member whose term has expired, they are highlighted in bold. And we have four applicants. I know last time when this item was tabled, we were hoping for more applicants from District One, but unfortunately, we have, uh, we didn't get any. We have one from District Four and three from District Three.
So then, do we decide whether that person's an alternate or a regular member? Does the actual board decide on their own? Who decides that?
You could decide, I believe.
Okay.
I would move for the District Four Rep. Iris Diaz.
We have a motion to approve, uh, Iris Diaz from District Four.
To serve as a regular member?
Regular, yeah.
Okay. We have a motion, uh, to appoint Iris Diaz from District Four as a regular member, do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Okay, motion carries. And then, uh, do we have any motions for alternates? The one alternate position that's missing. If not, I'll, I'll go ahead and move to appoint Ismaelina Josa.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second for Ismaelina Josa, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
And just as a recap, something that had been requested of us, to go over the actions taken by the board over the last quarter. Um, like I said, we go over variances, special exceptions, and administrative appeals. Uh, we have only seen variances to this point, um, so we see side yard encroachment, rear yard encroachment, sidewalk variances, lot widths, and things of that sort. Uh, so thank you for appointing two members to the Board of Adjustment.
Thank you.
Next, we have action item number twenty-eight, consideration action on resolution number twenty-nineteen dash zero seventy, accepting a donation for public purposes of approximately two point eighty-six acres of real property from Union Pacific Railroad located on and along the building trail.
I'll move to accept that.
Second.
We have a motion to accept and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have action item number twenty-nine, consideration action to acknowledge the Cameron Appraisal District Chief Appraiser certification of the City of Brownsville's twenty-nineteen tax rule.
Good evening, our Mayor City Commissioners, uh, this item is to acknowledge the Chief Appraisal's certi- certification of the City of Brownsville's twenty-nineteen tax rule. The, uh, report, uh, is attached to your attachment. One of the notable items on here is gonna be the taxable values for, for twenty-eighteen were six point six billion dollars. There was an increase for twenty-eighteen up to seven point one billion dollars or seven point five eight percent increase.
Just requires an action, just to ratify?
Just to acknowledge.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion to approve, do you have a second? Motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Next, we have action item number thirty, consideration and action to acknowledge the Finance Director's certification of the estimated ad valorem tax debt collection rate for the tax year twenty-nineteen and the excess debt tax collections for tax year twenty-eighteen.
Um, part of the, uh, part of setting the tax rate, we must follow chapter twenty-six of the Property Tax Code. We need to, uh, uh, set the estimated tax collection rate for twenty-nineteen and the excess collection of twenty-eighteen. Uh, what we're rec- what we're certifying is that the collection rate for twenty-nineteen is gonna be a hundred percent, and the excess collections that would be at, for twenty-eighteen would be at zero percent. Recommend approval.
Motion to approve?
We have a motion.
Second.
And a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Next, we have action item number thirty-one, consideration and action to acknowledge the Finance Director's calculation of the city's effective and rollback ad valorem tax rates for tax year twenty-nineteen or fiscal year twenty-twenty.
Again, as part of the annual process of setting up the effective, calculating the effective tax rule and the rollback rate, we must follow a, um, ex- a worksheet that we need, must complete. This worksheet, we work in conjunction with our, uh, Cameron County, uh, Tax Office to make sure that we calculate the effective rate and the, and the rollback rate correctly. Uh, the effective rate for, for this year is gonna be point six. Point six-six-one-three-seven-four, and the calculator rollback rate is gonna be point seven-one-eight-nine-one-two. Recommend approval.
I move to approve.
We have a motion to approve, do you have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second, any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries.
Action item number thirty-two, consideration action to discuss a possible ad valorem tax rate increase and to authorize two public hearings on August the twenty-seventh, twenty-nineteen, and on September third, twenty-nineteen, to discuss the proposed ad valorem tax rate that will exceed the effective tax rate.
I've, uh, I've made a presentation to kind of go over the truth and taxation and setting up the effective rate and the calculator rate. Truth and taxation process, there are several processes that we need to take before we, uh, adopt a rate. First, we need to draft the budget, calculate the tax rate, publish notices, hold public hearings, and then, then, after all that, then we can adopt the tax rate. This is governed by chapter twenty-six of the Texas, uh, of the Texas, uh, Tax Code. And, uh, draft the budget, there's, there, we need to calculate the maintenance and operational expense, calculate the debt, debt as required. The Chief Appraiser prepares and certifies the taxable values for the, for the taxing unit. The city received the Chief Appraisers' report on July sixteenth. Calculated the tax rate. These are the two rates that we need to calculate. The first one, that, that's always the effective tax rate. The, this rate will provide the taxing unit with the, about the same amount of revenue it receives in the year before on our properties taxed in both years. Again, same revenue on properties taxed in both years. The rollback rate, the rollback rate is a maximum allowed by law without voter approval. This portion of the overall rate used, used to, to retire debt may raise as high as it necessary without triggering a rollback rate. The MNO portion, however, may only raise eight percent. Under the portion of it, only the MNO portion, we're, we're allowed to go eight percent. Now, you've heard about Senate Bill Two. Senate Bill Two is gonna have an effect on this. Senate Bill Two is gonna cap this off at three point five percent. Uh, when we have the, uh, when we have the, uh, the tax presentation, tax label presentation, I'll go over more how this is gonna affect us in future years. But for now, for now, the calculator rate's at, uh, at eight percent. Uh, Tax Code requires taxing units to publish their calculated effective tax rate. If a tax unit, uh, also operates a website, we need to publish that in our website. Uh, we need to hold public hearings, uh, tax, tax unit must hold two public hearings if the proposed ad valorem tax rate exceeds the lower of the effective or rollback rate. The annual tax rate must be set by an ordinance. This is a calculated worksheet summarized. On the top left-hand corner, the calculated effective tax rate going back was point six-six-one-three-four. What we're proposing, the budget this year, is to maintain the same tax rate of point seven zero zero one-six-three. This is a tax increase of five point nine-three percent. We wanna maintain the same tax rate. Top right-hand corner, you have the tax rate. Again, comparing it to last year's tax rate adopted compared to what we're proposing in the budget, there is no tax rate increase. So, or, uh, bottom left-hand corner, this is the rollback calculation. The rollback calculation, again, is probably broken up into the maintenance, uh, MNO and the debt service. Total amount is point seven-one-eight-nine-one-two. This is a rate that we can legally adopt without triggering a rollback election. Rollback election, anything above this rate, it would trigger, uh, that's, uh, the rollback election where citizens, uh, citizens competition the rate to come back to the effective rate. And the right, and the bottom right-hand corner is the, the rate distribution. When we get the seventy cents, how, how much is goes to debt service? Uh, point twenty-five-five-one-two, five point two, and the maintenance and operation portion, how much is to general fund? How much is used to the general fund for maintenance, for operations of, uh, services? Point four-four-five-four-three-one. Uh, again, the general requirements of taxation states that if the city's going to propose a tax rate that exceeds the effective rate or the rollback rate, it must hold two public hearings. What we're doing in this one, we're proposing to maintain the seventy cents tax rate. Again, because that's above the effective tax rate, we must, must hold two public hearings. Uh, what we're doing today is we're, we're, uh, we're proposing tonight that the city commission unauthorized by vote that these two meetings will be held on August twenty-seventh and September third. Uh, one of, one of the items I wanna make sure clear is when we publish the proposed tax rate, where, where by practice, we always publish the maximum rate, the rollback rate is point seven-one-eight-nine-one-two. We do that because if we publish anything less than that and there is a need to raise a tax rate about, beyond what's published, we, we're not able to do it without doing a publication, so. So when we publish it, we publish the mu- the maximum, uh, rate for, but when we adopt it, we adopt the rate that, that we're proposing or is authorized. And, uh, we're, uh, again, we're proposing that, uh, we announce and authorize, uh, by vote that these, these two meetings will be on August twenty-seventh and September third. Six o'clock. Should be regular commission meetings, six o'clock.
At the regular commission meetings? Okay.
I'll move to, uh, approve the two meetings to authorize the two public meetings.
We have a motion?
Second.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Can we have a roll call on that? Can we have a roll call on that? Who voted for it?
All right.
Aye.
Thank you.
That was weird.
Required by law for...
I figured, yeah.
I was like, oh wow, okay, Lupe.
Next, we have action item number thirty-three. Discussion consideration of possible action on resolution twenty-nineteen dash zero seventy-five to repeal resolution number twenty-nineteen dash zero thirty, thereby restoring the street name of East Fronton Street.
Honorable Members, Commissioners, as requested at the last meeting, last commission meeting, we were instructed to bring this item back for consideration. And at the last meeting, there was a group of concerned citizens and business owners that are requesting to repeal the previous approved resolution and restore the name of East Fronton Street. So the item before you has a resolution, basically repealing the original resolution for your consideration.
Based on the number of complaints and the public outcry on this issue, and also the concerns about the process that was used, I would make a motion to repeal that resolution.
We have a motion to repeal the resolution. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? I do have some discussion. One of the things that I had asked for was just really trying to figure out what sort of due diligence was followed to notify all these people because, obviously, we had a process, though it wasn't a written process, we had something in place that notified the residents of the proposed change. So because of the, because of all the people that came out here, I'm not exactly sure what process was followed, how many people were actually touched, because the packet from that meeting showed that there was people that complained or that people had an issue with it. So the commission approved it. My concern is, the commission approved it, and they had the ability to voice their complaint, which they did, the commission still approved it. So I'm wondering, was there any other issues with the process here at all?
Well, we, like I said, we went to every resident and business and dropped off a letter. Sometimes, people weren't home, so we left it in a location where it was basically easy to be seen. We did our best, I mean, yeah, like you said, it was kind of a, it was not a written process. We did our best to notify as many as we could. We did publish in a newspaper twice. We did call some of the people that were opposed to it to show up to the meeting to voice their concern. Unfortunately, for whatever reason, nobody showed up. But we did, we did do our best, given the circumstances and, you know, and the information that we had, to try to notify as many people, especially the people that were opposed, so they could come and voice their concerns. And unfortunately, at that meeting, nobody showed up in opposition. So I guess, in large part, that's why the commission maybe approved that at the time, but if they would have had this group of people showing up at that meeting, things might have been different.
But there, there was individuals that had actually opposed it.
Yes.
They just didn't show up to the meeting.
They just didn't show up to the meeting, yes.
Did they know about the meeting?
Yes, we let them know. Actually, we called several of the people the day of the meeting.
There's a lot of people nodding their head that they didn't know, so I think the process was flawed.
Because if, if the process was followed, I don't want to, I don't want to overturn it. But if, if people, or at least my personal vote, but if, if people weren't notified of the meeting itself, then I have an issue with that. Then, then I don't feel that they had an opportunity to voice their opinion. So...
We did our best to notify as many people as we could, as many people we could get ahold of.
Well, we don't know what that is, so...
I'm just surprised that twelve people or more signed a paper saying that they were opposed to it, but they didn't show up. So I'm kind of just wondering if they were advised of the meeting or not, because I'm surprised they wouldn't have shown up.
I'm looking at the memo here, and it says there's at least forty-five who were for it, thirty signatures of residents and businesses owners, and fifteen who were for it on the memo that we got on our packet.
Right. And how many does it show that were opposed?
It doesn't say here how many it shows.
Because the packet shows a bunch of people signed against it, too. And there was some, I saw there was one name that was against it, and he was also for it.
Yeah, it's...
I have a question.
Yeah, we do have a motion and a second. Any further discussion?
I think it's, now that we have a formal process to change a name, I think it would be, you know, I don't know how many residents live between that stretch. I mean, do you know offhand how many people would be affected?
No, I don't know exactly.
I think it would be helpful to get the big, big picture here and really see what the real, you know, according to our process now, what the real sediment is on this issue. Obviously, there are a lot of people that are against it, but there are also people that are for it. So it's, to me, it's, it's an emotional decision. I'd rather have it be fact-based.
Okay. Any other, any other discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Okay. Motion fails.
Action item number thirty-four. Discussion consideration and possible action to amend Article six, Section thirty-eight dash one fifty-six of Chapter thirty-eight, Code of Ethics.
Commissioner, Mayor and Commissioners, this is an item in regards to the request to bring back ideas as to how to perhaps implement simplification to some of the personal financial statements that subboards and subcommittees had to be subjected to. And there's a number of ways how we can do this. One is, we can simplify this by just complying with the Texas law mandates. The Texas Government Code, Chapter one forty-five mandates that the commission, the mayor, the city manager, and the city attorney comply with Section one forty-five, but makes no mention of anyone else. So that's one route that we could go. The secondary route could be to perhaps approve one of the...
Wait, sorry, can I interrupt you? Can I stop? Can I go back to that? I want to say something. You said that they didn't show up at a public hearing, but they weren't allowed to speak. I'm assuming they weren't allowed to speak, like they weren't allowed to speak now. So how is, sorry, and this is going back to the previous, if I, if we can reopen it. I'm thinking, why is it that we're having, we're having this hearing, but we're not even allowing them to speak? And then, when they didn't show up, what does it matter? They weren't going to be allowed to speak anyway.
I believe the first time people did speak.
Folks, I'm sorry. It's not an item you can comment on. We understand. I'm sorry, the vote occurred. Yeah, I'm sorry, guys. A vote occurred already. We can't... Guys, it's not something you can comment on. We understand where you all...
He didn't tell you the truth. He didn't tell you the truth, okay? You lied.
Guys, just, I got to call this order. I'm sorry, guys.
Yo traté señor.
I hope staff learned something from this.
Because what's the point? If they weren't allowed to speak during a public conference, and they're not allowed...
Señor, ya. I know one of the persons that was, that had signed up to speak today was, had an opportunity to speak the last time. In fact, he was given ample time and presented a very, very compelling argument as to why perhaps the name should be restored, and that caused one of the commission members to request that this item be brought back. But then again, this is an item that was passed way back when. And the item was noticed in the newspaper at least twice, from what I'm hearing from staff.
And the item included the time for the meeting?
My understanding is yes, that all that was given, so...
Well, I think we learned from this process.
It's pretty obvious that there was a whole crowd here in opposition, so whether they went to the meeting or not, it's...
But I think there's, there's a process now, if they want to voice their opinion here, they can formally protest this.
Well, they can now. After September first, they can actually speak on the item.
No, but they can, they can protest to change this street back in a...
They can't. That, this was their opportunity.
No, no, I'm talking about to change the name. We have a name-changing policy now for our streets, so they can go and do that. If that's a public...
In other words, they can petition to change it to Fronton. Maybe?
I think that, I mean, that would be the correct process. The item was voted on, and there was outcry in the audience. In any other situation where we have zoning issues in homes and other neighborhoods and things like that, where it doesn't go the way somebody wants to, the answer is not to create a public outburst, it's to define the policies and procedures.
And it may be better for, in the future also, to list these as public hearings? Name changes for streets as public hearings? That way, whoever wants to take it up can actually voice their opinion that way. Rather than, if we can do it that way, counsel, maybe look for that. Because I, I mean, I think the process itself that existed, there wasn't one, so there was some flaws in it. But it did allow for least notice and advising them as to when the meeting date was. But I think now that we have an actual more formal policy in place, I don't expect this to happen again, and it'll be frowned upon if it happens again.
I understand, and again, the city attorney's office has no position either for or against this item. I'm here basically to just, just try to help the process along and inform you of policies that we have in place so that you all can conduct your hearing in an appropriate manner.
I appreciate that. Thanks.
Mayor and Commissioners...
We're on item thirty-four.
Just a comment on the item. I met with the group, myself and staff did, and what I recall is, they thought the process was flawed and that there was an error made. I think there was a distinction that I was trying to help them understand between a process that wasn't as robust to one that now is. And at that meeting, Commissioner Gowan, in fact, was the one who asked staff to draft the policy because some concerns were identified by the commission about the lack of that process, in terms of what is the minimum threshold? Fifty percent? Seventy-five percent of the number of residents who have to agree? What about criteria? That whole bit, right? So that was all proactively identified. The only reason why we had the policy ready when the complaints came in was because we had started drafting one to bring back to the commission. Otherwise, we wouldn't have had that. So we were able to bring the item back last meeting and have a policy in hand. So that was identified. I think the policy decision that the commission makes here is, okay, perhaps the process was too wide open. That was established, now there's a more robust, formal process. What I recall in my meeting with them is, they just felt that the process was deficient and that we voted in error, and I was trying to help them understand that the commission didn't vote in error, because the process is not a perfect science, and if you go to their home and leave an envelope in the gate or on the door, and if they don't get it, or if someone's not home because they were working, we can compensate for all these what-ifs. So I think that's the difference between what existed and what now exists.
But I also, Mr. Redd, I also recall, though, in the packet, because I went back to look at this, but the packet itself showed that there was people opposed to this.
Sure.
So the commission, I mean, it was in the packet that there was opposition to it, and considering that, they still voted the way they did, so it's...
Yeah.
Okay. Counsel, proceed. I'm sorry.
Yes, in regards to Chapter thirty-eight, there's a number of ways how we can simplify the process of as to who is required to file a personal financial statement. Option, one of the options that we have is just comply with the state law in regards to what Chapter one forty-five of the Texas Government Code requests, and that is that the city commission, city manager, and city attorney file a full form, but makes no demands as to any other subboards. That is one of the ways that we could comply with simplification of this process. The other one is by simplifying the PFS form itself, which I presented copies to the commission for its consideration. The other way we can do this is to do an amalgamation of many of these. For example, perhaps observe Chapter one forty-five with exceptions to perhaps the quasi-judicial. And, and I know some of the concerns from some of the commission members was that there needs to be a requirement for some of the EDCs because they do handle a large amount of funds in regards to how they incentivize the project. So that's what you have, is the commission before you. You have no one route in which to move to approve an amendment to Chapter thirty-eight. I think the only limitation would be your creativity with this. We could go with the full simplification to one forty-five, or perhaps a mix and match amongst the items that the city attorney's office has presented to the board.
Okay. So then, if I understand you correctly, Mr. Lacoste, Section one forty-five or Chapter one forty-five references a requirement for the commission, the city manager, and the city attorney to file the statements, and nobody else?
Correct.
Okay.
And that would be in full compliance with what the state of Texas requires.
Right. Okay. All right, do I have any motions?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Motion to approve.
Just to clarify what we are approving.
Yeah.
Remember, the item that is placed before you is direction as to how to amend Chapter thirty-eight, and specifically thirty-eight slash one fifty-six.
To amend it?
The motion then has to include a method to amend it.
Yes.
Correct.
So what is the method?
The choices are before you...
Yeah, but she made her motion, so what's the...
I would say the motion would be to allow everybody to do it except for boards that don't have any financial interest. Is that an option?
That's a full motion.
If we follow the state law...
I'll rescind my motion.
Commissioner, if we follow the state law, that would be under Chapter one forty-five, which would be the commission, the city manager, and the city attorney, and nobody else.
Okay.
So you can do it that way, or you can...
I'm going to rescind my motion.
Okay. Do we have any other motions?
I'll move that we follow the state law, that he recommended only the commission, the city attorney, and the city manager be required to file the disclosure statements.
Okay, we have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Those opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you.
Next, we have action item number thirty-five. Consideration action on resolution number twenty-nineteen dash zero seventy-six, expressing support for the United States-Canada Agreement.
Can I ask a question about that? Are we going to get some kind of briefing about what impact this agreement has on us locally, or are we just going to approve or make our resolution supporting it?
What I sent yesterday, this item was requested, and what I sent yesterday was a Moody's report, a Moody's financial report, that talked about the USMCA impact on import-export